The meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Ken Kyler, President of the Board of Education. I would like to welcome you to the October 12, 2022 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on a CCPS website and broadcast live on Channel 21. We are also recording this meeting so that it can be accessed on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. Citizen participation will be held at approximately 5:15 PM and then again later on the agenda if needed. Speakers will be directed into the boardroom from the building lobby and are allotted three minutes to address the Board. As a reminder, please silence all cell phones and other devices. Also, Board members, please turn off your microphones when you are not speaking. Please stand for the Pledge Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
If possible, I'd like to amend the agenda. We do have... If possible, can we remove 7E, which is approval of proposed revisions to Board policy for citizen participation?
So we have a motion to amend this motion to eliminate item 70 from tonight's agenda. Second?
I'll second.
Do I need to do a motion on, a vote on the amendment and a vote, vote on the both?
You need to vote on the motion to amend the agenda.
Okay, so...
And then after that vote, then you move to...
Approve what they revised, okay. Board members, any more discussion on amending the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Board members, any discussion on passing the revised agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We now have approval of the minutes for the regular Board meeting on September 14th. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on the minutes for the September 14th regular Board meeting?
There were a couple of edits. We're looking at a revised copy.
Yeah, Board members, you're looking at the minutes and there were some revisions made prior to the meeting in red. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. So now we have the unapproved minutes from the September 7th work session. Can I have a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Carroll County Student Government Report.
Okay. All right. Hello, and I hope everybody's having a great evening. My name is Nikki Zhang, the Carroll County Student Government Association or CCSGA President. As some of you may know, we hosted a Board of Education forum for all candidates running for a position on the Board. We would like to thank everyone that attended the event along with the candidates that volunteered their time to answer questions that Carroll County students created. That was an incredibly important event for us because, of course, everything that the Board members pass influences the many students in this county. We appreciate that our voices are valued and considered in every action taken. Onto some new business, CCSGA will be hosting our first in-person General Assembly since 2019, next Wednesday, October 19th, at South Carroll High School. I am incredibly excited to host this event as it was these General Assemblies that encouraged me to participate in CCSGA in the first place. I hope that as more time passes, CCSGA can continue to transition back into how we hosted our General Assemblies before. As I've hinted prior, our theme this year is CCSGA Reignited, and our General Assemblies will be based around the idea of rebuilding. For this specific General Assembly named Spark Leadership, we will be focusing on rebuilding this gap between middle schools and high schools. Our feeder schools are what brings us capable and strong leaders, and CCSGA will be taking this opportunity to encourage more middle school, middle school students to become interested in student government and leadership in general. We will have feeder school discussions along with a multitude of workshops that will teach students how to rebuild their student governments and learn how to become a leader in their school. Our keynote speakers are Maya Durkovich and David Arwolo, who are the President and Second Vice President of the Maryland Association of Student Councils, respectively. We hope that their keynote can bring us new ideas and continue to help CCSGA and Carroll County students in general to thrive and seek out opportunities to get their voices heard and make changes. As of right now, registration for this General Assembly is still open and will be open until Friday, October 15th. If any students are interested, please reach out to your advisor for the registration link along with a permission slip and emergency form. We're excited to see everyone there. That is all. Thank you and have a great evening.
In order to have an orderly presentation of comments by the public, the following guidelines apply. Speakers will be allowed to address the Board at the allotted three minutes. Only, only the speakers that have completed the blue card in its entirely will be chosen to address the Board. Citizens not appearing in person for public comment can write to the Board through email or US mail. Citizen participation is not intended to be a question-answer session. However, if citizens have specific questions, the superintendent will assign a staff member to make contact during the Board meeting to arrange a time to respond to questions. The superintendent and Board reserve the right to correct misinformation presented as factual after the conclusion of the citizen participation period. Statements to the Board should relate to a recent agenda item, an agenda item that is expected to appear in the future, or a matter of general policy over which the Board has authority. Personnel matters, pending appeals, the actions or statements of individual staff, or items related to employee negotiations are not appropriate topics and may not be discussed. It is the intent of the Board to allow all citizens an opportunity to speak. Therefore, the Board has scheduled time on the agenda for citizens' participation at approximately 5:15. There is an opportunity for additional citizen participation later in the meeting as we get to it on the agenda. The Board reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on a particular topic so that all topics may be addressed. If 30 minutes have passed and there are citizens who have not addressed the Board, additional time may be allotted later in the meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. All comments should be directed to Board members at the dais. Citizens may only address the Board with their individual comments. Citizens may not stand in for another person or group and read their comments. When the allotted time expires, the speaker is permitted to complete a sentence. Citizens may leave any handouts for Board members on the table at the back of the boardroom. Please do not approach the dais. Additionally, the public may not display signs or posters during the Board meeting. In lieu of signs, or if you are unable to complete your comment in the allotted time, individuals are encouraged to submit remarks to the Board in writing. Those seated in the audience are asked to be respectful of the speaker and refrain from commenting to the speaker or Board members. Our first speaker is Michael...
Shavala.
Shavala.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Shavala, and I teach eighth grade social studies at Shiloh Middle School. As many of my students can tell you, history is all about people. I'd like to tell you the stories of three remarkable men. The three men are Patrick, Terry, and Tim. They were best of friends. All three served the citizens of New York City as members of the Fire Department of New York, the FDNY. Patrick, Patty, two of his friends, is Patrick Brown, Captain of Ladder Three. On a Tuesday morning 21 years ago, Captain Brown led his men into the stairways of the North Tower of the World Trade Center and climbed upward. When the South Tower collapsed, Fire Department Command radioed Patty and ordered him to immediately evacuate the building. He replied saying, quote, "This is the officer of Ladder Company Three. I refuse that order. I am on the 44th floor and we have too many burned people with me. I am not leaving them," end quote. Captain Patty Brown, his men, and the civilians they were comforting all perished when the building collapsed. Terry is Terry Hatton, Captain of Rescue One. As he prepared to lead his men into the same stairwell as Captain Brown, he saw his friend Tim across the crowded lobby of the tower. He called Tim over, hugged him, kissed him on the cheek, and whispered, quote, "I love you, brother. I may never see you again," end quote. Captain Hatton led his men up 85 floors to reach the impact zone and assist the injured. They too perished when the building collapsed. Terry's widow discovered that she was pregnant with her first and only child the days, in the days after his death. Terry Elizabeth, named for both his mother and father, was born in May of 2002. Tim is retired FDNY firefighter Tim Brown. Miraculously, he survived the collapse of both towers but buried 94 friends, including his best friends Patty and Terry. In the last hour of their lives, Terry and Patty, along with 341 other FDNY firefighters, provided a living example to our nation of duty, honor, service, selflessness, and courage, ideals we strive to teach our students daily. Tim has dedicated his life to telling their stories to others, including students from Shiloh Middle School. In a program unique to our school, our students have an opportunity to meet the families of Captains Brown and Hatton along with other full FDNY members. Why is it that according to CCPS policy, I can display the flag of any sports team in my classroom but not the flag of the Fire Department of New York? In a time when many people, including our students, look to sports stars and entertainers as heroes, it is sadly ironic that current policy prevents me from displaying a flag that represents true heroism. Why is it that Shiloh Middle School cannot publicly fly a flag presented to us in recognition of our students' commitment to never forget by the National Freedom Flag Foundation, a flag no other school in the county and the state has earned, and only one of 30 schools so recognized nationwide? This is a piece of the World Trade Center, the North Tower, from the 94th floor. It was presented to our school by the Freedom Flag Foundation. It represents one of the worst days in American history. Please revise the current policy to allow the FDNY freedom flags to be displayed in my classroom and flown from the school's flagpole, giving my students a visual reminder of the heroes who sacrificed themselves for their fellow citizens and to proudly and publicly commemorate Shiloh's commitment to never forget.
Next speaker, Amanda Jaskowski.
Excuse me. I speak today with an acknowledgement that much of this information and many of these thoughts were recently published by the esteemed Mr. Cowman Buzzy Hettelman on the Maryland Matters News site. I was taken by his thoughtful argument and felt it would be helpful to share here in slightly edited form for length. Mr. Hettelman writes that increasing calls for local control and the political weaponization of school boards could endanger successful implementation of the blueprint for Maryland's future. Hettelman cautions, quote, "This doesn't mean that all local control should be abandoned. It does mean that state and local educators must get their act together to a far greater degree than they ever have. There must be trust and collaborative problem solving within the boundaries set by the state and federal laws." MSDG is entrusted with general control and supervision over public schools, but local educators often deny their scope of authority, viewing state regulation and direction as insensitive to local conditions and infringements on their professionalism. More surprising, MSDG sometimes denies its own authority, seeking to pass the buck on hot-button policy and practice issues and thereby avoid local wrath. There is vast, end quote, "There is vast room for collaboration, however. To strike the right balance, Maryland can draw upon a primer by the Council of Chief State School Officers, which I've sent to you by email this afternoon." To what extent is local control still available and achievable, then? The bottom line is that state requirements are the floor, not the ceiling, for local leadership. As a general rule, state officials determine what standards locals must meet, while local school boards have plenty of latitude in how the standards are met. For starters, Hettelman suggests MSDG, in reviewing local applications for funding, quote, "should spell up, upfront detailed guidance on evidence-based best practices, not just bare lists of programs, but manuals and other tools for implementation, and then offer user-friendly nuts-and-bolts staff training on them," end quote. This would include items related to the health curriculum, which you'll discuss later this evening, so that parents can see how those framework standards might translate into actual classroom instruction. This is how it should be, but we should not be in the habit of striking through entire learning outcomes because we feel them to be inappropriate. Educational standards developed by the state are not generated on a whim. They are based on research and best practices in teaching and learning in consultation with experts in the topic of study. For those who rail about protecting their kids, here is the proven way to do it. As a candidate for a position on this Board, I do hope to be a part of the process at the local level, by providing education for our children from trained professionals who can complement family conversations with age-appropriate information and care. To quote Mr. Hettelman once more, "Local educators generally get it. They'll actually welcome state requirements and guidance that is doable and aligned with resources. That's what the blueprint is all about. If state leaders do their jobs right, local schools will be properly empowered to do theirs right, too. There will be much less blame game over local control and much more student success," end quote. And that's something we can all agree on."
Thank you. Next speaker is Erica Retey.
Retey.
Retey. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent McCabe. My name is Erica Retey. I am a social studies teacher at Shiloh Middle School. My life has been a life of service. First, my, when I was in the military, I was in the Navy for eight years. Mr. Kyler, I believe I sent you an email about that. When I got into the reserves, I was also a sheriff's deputy in Yavapai County, Arizona, and then I became a teacher. So my life has been one of service, and I'm very proud of that. This is something that I try and demonstrate to my children and students every single day. While in the Navy, I helped support Operation Enduring Freedom and Iraqi Freedom. I was stationed five miles across the New York Harbor on 9/11. I watched those attacks from the bow of my ship. I was pregnant. I was required to deploy, and I did, until I was five months pregnant, and then I came home. We got underway immediately. We escorted the USS Comfort into the New York Harbor and assisted any way we could before we deployed. Carroll County, as a community and a school district, is full of veterans and service members with similar stories. In my school alone, there are three teachers who are veterans. One principal, who is a veteran. One teacher, who is a member of the Civil Service, Civil, Civil Air Patrol, excuse me, and one custodian, who is also a veteran. Your current flag policy prohibits us from hanging our flags of service from, in our classrooms. It's disgraceful that we cannot hang our flags in our classrooms, but we can hang sports flags. How exactly do sports flags encourage patriotism amongst our students? Nearly every school in Carroll County holds a Veterans Day ceremony honoring our veterans. I'm sure this November 11th will be no different. Are we only limiting patriotism to select holidays? This is a slap in the face to patriotism and those who risk their lives to uphold the Constitution. Please consider revising your current flag policy to include flags of military service. Thank you.
Thank you. Winnie Novak.
Some messages are so important, they should be repeated often. They should be backed up with actions. You don't tell your child you only love them, you love them only once in their lifetime and assume the message was heard. You repeat it. You show it with your actions. Our students are seeing your actions, hearing your words when you make policies, and what you allow in this room. In the family life and human sexuality standards, you are stating you don't need to explain why it is wrong to tease or bully others because it's covered elsewhere. Why can't it be covered multiple times and multiple places? LGBT youth reported being more afraid to go to school or to be threatened or injured with a weapon on school property compared to straight youth. LGBT youth in our county reported an especially higher frequency of hate incidents than other counties. What are you doing in response to this? All I have seen is what you are not going to do. The new state health framework was in response to these statistics, in order to foster inclusion of all. You state it's not appropriate to explain sexual orientation or gender identity and expression in middle school, but you know there are LGBTQ students in middle school. You know there are families that are LGBTQ. But if they were straight or cis... There are teachers and staff that are LGBTQ. Their identity is not age-appropriate, but if they were straight or cis, they would be? Does that mean not, a non-binary teacher cannot teach if they use gen, gender-neutral titles? My friends' families are not age-appropriate because it's two moms. Identity and love are not politics. The handbook states our students have a right to be treated with respect by all and to access and participate in a safe, welcoming educational environment. That can't just be words written in one place and never acted on. Our students need to know that. I'm not sure students are reading the handbook to know their rights. Do they know they have a right to be referred to by their preferred pronoun or name? Are teachers allowed to tell students their rights? Are they too afraid it is violating your interpretation of political neutrality? Opinions are whether schools should be open on Jewish holy days, or if we're testing too much. Not whether groups of students are mentally ill or their parents are criminals. It is not name-calling its hate speech. Oxford Dictionary defines hate speech as abusive or threatening speech expressing prejudice against a particular group, especially on the basis of race, religion, or sexual orientation. This is not a freedom of speech issue, it's an inclusion issue. Hate speech is not creating a welcoming environment. It is not showing our students that we support them. If I were to call wrestlers deranged, 4-H parents criminals, would that be allowed? Neighboring counties have in their public comment policies that they will not tolerate abusive or threatening language or action. Hate is abusive. Maslow before blooms. Our children need to feel safe and included in order to reach their full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Scanlon.
Hey, I attended the strategic plan work session on October 3rd, and as we move forward, I have a few observations. Pillar one is to provide multiple pathway opportunities for student success. I absolutely agree that reading on grade level, especially in the third grade, is an essential benchmark. Beyond reading, we need to continue a focus on math proficiency in all of the state-tested disciplines. One area we can do a better job is helping our high school students navigate their options and opportunities. Choosing between honors classes to Career Tech Center, dual enrollment, AP classes, internships, it is a lot to take in, and this is where our school counselors and advisors can play a crucial role in helping our students. Pillar two, family and community partnerships are absolutely essential for our school system to be successful. We've done a good job here and need to build on those relationships. Each individual school and CCPS need to expand their outreach to parents, businesses, and community organizations. It's no surprise that pillar three, developing and supporting a successful workforce, has been an area where we have fallen short. Obviously, the Carroll County salary scale is one factor. Our starting teacher salaries are behind surrounding counties, and by five years out, they are significantly, significantly behind other counties except Frederick. The tone that the community and the Board of Education sets is another factor. Do we support our educators as professionals, or don't we? We have one of the least diverse staffs in the state, about 6%, when our student minority population is 19%. Do we support diversity, or don't we? Retention rates are a problem everywhere, but we need to stay focused on Carroll County and what we can do better to attract and retain a highly qualified staff. Pillar four, we all can agree that a safe, secure, healthy, and modern learning environment is crucial and achievable. As I've talked with educators around the county, I think we are returning to normal, whatever that is. We need to set clear expectations of our students, reteach those expectations when needed, and instill accountability. And I believe a strong bring-your-own-device policy will go a long way in helping our students stay focused. We are in the 22-23 school year, so I'm not sure how useful it is to keep looking back. The pandemic was an anomaly that took everybody by surprise. We struggled through and learned a lot in the process, but we need to look ahead. Implementation of the blueprint will impact us, but we can't lose sight of why we are here, our students. They are approaching, approaching an increasingly complex and diverse world. We need to prepare them, not only as critical thinkers and effective communicators, but how to succeed in the real world. Thank you.
Next speaker is Madison Bunting.
My name is Maddie Bunting, and I am currently a junior at Westminster High School. I am here to discuss the decision that was made to not allow a Powderpuff game at my school this year. After receiving an email from my principal, Katie Nefflin, it is my understanding that Powderpuff has been canceled due to behavioral issues occurring during the event. In her email, Mrs. Nefflin stated, "In the last five years at WHS, there have been numerous issues with the Powderpuff event, specifically with the male cheerleaders," end quote. Five years ago, I was in sixth grade. The actions of students from three years before I was even in high school should not be affecting me or my peers. If a teacher has a class, take a test, and two students in that entire class cheat, those two students face the consequences of... those two students face the consequences of cheating, not the entire class. I'm not sure why a school event like this is being treated any differently. Her email also states, "It was determined by administration and staff that the Powderpuff event would no longer include the cheerleaders. This decision was made last winter by the former principal, myself, the assistant principals, the athletic director, and the teacher leadership team, and communicated to SGA in the spring by me. SGA was not willing to plan and host the event with this restriction in place, and so the event was canceled," end quote. As a student with perfect attendance last year, I can attest that no announcement was ever made to Westminster students, that SGA was voting on whether to host Powderpuff or not. I, along with many others that make up Westminster's student body, feel that last year's SGA did not represent us properly, as proven by a petition started by a fellow member of my 2024 class at WHS to continue the Powderpuff game tradition. The petition has garnered over 1,000 signatures. The many excuses that my principal included in her email demonstrate to me that my school's administration is incapable of handling the misbehavior of a few high school students properly. Instead, the administration decided to avoid disciplining the kids that deserved it and punished the entire school for the acts of those few kids. My mom, Megan Bunting, graduated from Westminster High School in 1997 and was able to enjoy the fun tradition of Powderpuff. I, too, want to have this experience. Why are we ending a tradition that has happened for so many years due to a minor issue that could have been fixed if the proper discipline had occurred? Why are innocent students like me being punished for something that we had no participation in? After having so many fun events taken away from us these past two years due to COVID, I am asking that the Board of Education and Central Office help to promote and restore fun student activities such as this one. Furthermore, please provide the support to school administrators that it's okay to discipline the students that misbehave, so that students who follow the rules can continue to enjoy high school and the many extracurricular activities associated with these final four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belinda Lawson.
The definition of activism is the policy of using vigorous campaigning to bring about social change. If you look on the websites for the National Education Association and the American Federation of Teachers and Professionals, their main objective is to bring about social change and use the power of the public school systems to do just that. Can you honestly say that our schools are not teaching activism? How much more proof and evidence do you need? Does it make sense for national and local teachers' unions to be teaching activism instead of focusing on the massive learning loss they created by demanding that schools of Maryland be closed the majority of the school year? Does it make sense to be taught reproductive biology and then taught at the same time that men can physically have children without having a female reproductive organ? If Carroll County teachers are concerned about students being behind in their classes and having to catch them up to date, why are other teachers advocating to teach children more about sex than being concerned about the massive learning loss? If you can't protect a board member from bullying, harassment, and stalking in your own school system, why should parents feel like you can protect their students at school? Why is it okay for groups to support children, changing their gender and bodies, but it's not okay teaching religion in school? Which one do you feel is extreme? Why are teachers in the school system still saying racism is not being taught and CRT is not in the classrooms, but at the same time, in your own policy statements, you reference diversity, equity, and inclusion? Why aren't white students included in your equity policy? If this is to create a sense of unity, why is a particular race excluded? So can I just remind everyone in the room what racism is? According to the Merriam-Webster's definition of racism, racism is a belief that race is a fundamental determinant of human traits and capacities, and that racial differences produce an inherent superiority of a particular race. So when you tell white students they are oppressors, and when you tell black students they are oppressed, you are literally teaching children to be racist, to have this mindset. I'd also like to address a serious problem at Northwest Middle School that mothers in the community have recently brought to my attention. Students are being given two-day suspensions for sexual assaults and assaults of minors who are committing these acts on multiple children over and over again. Outside of the school system, these are felonies. Instead, parents are told to contact CPS and the police, in which one mother has received no help in over a year. After seeing a video of a recent fight at the same school involving one of the attackers who received a mere suspension for sexually assaulting a child, it concerns me that children may be taking matters into their own hands as they are being ignored by the administration and parents are unable to help. I'm urging all teachers to start asking questions to try and help these kids and demand the administration at this school to take action. The adults in this school should be protecting the kids. The kids should not have to resort to violence before they are being protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Felix Collin.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the citizen participation policy or the proposal to change the policy. I spoke last time at the last meeting about the same thing, and I believe the board kind of missed the point of what was being asked at the last meeting concerning limiting public comments. While I appreciate the thought of knowing who will be chosen to speak in advance, the point isn't knowing who will speak, but kind of how they were chosen. What criteria is being used to determine who is allowed the privilege to voice the concerns of the community? And how do we know that these people actually represent the voice of the people on the issue? What if their concerns don't align with those people chosen? Many issues are not as simple as black and white. There can be more than two sides to a debate. How many community representatives from whatever side, whatever side is being discussed or whatever that even means, will be chosen in cases where the public's concern are more varied than just, "I'm on the left," or "I'm on the right"? Who specifically is choosing what independent criteria and what independent criteria will they be using to choose? What process will be in place to ensure full transparency of the selection process, not just the people being selected? For certain, no one voting on the action should be involved in choosing, as that immediately inputs bias. It was also said at the last meeting that other boards don't allow many commenters, but I don't think it's right to determine our policy based on theirs. Just because they do something different doesn't mean their way is correct for this community. It is specifically because we have a smaller community that we can afford to hear more voices. There are many meetings that don't draw more than a few speakers. Some topics, the public basically trusts their elected representatives to take care of without needing great amounts of public input. But as I alluded to in the last meeting, topics that bring out the public in large numbers necessarily need more voices to be heard. It is the controversial topics that need further discussion, debate, and greater and deeper consideration by the board members. Additionally, none of these changes suggest that the wording of the proposed policy addresses the optics... Or, excuse me, additionally, none of the changes suggest to the wording of the proposed policy addresses the optics of the situation. It really does come across that the board doesn't need as much input because they've already made up their minds on the situation. If the public has no sway over the way that you consider policy and vote, then what's the purpose at all? Don't board members want to hear what we have to say before you decide on an issue? Also, having a second period of comments after the action items makes very little sense, as it's very likely that the issue being commented on will have already been voted on by that point. It renders it moot. Please consider the concerns of the public carefully. When deciding on this policy change, please listen to our words and internalize them before you vote. We are worth hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Margaret Barnes.
Hello. Good evening. First, I'd like to just address a couple of things. We had the two contenders for Board of Ed, Amanda Jaskowski and Tom Scanlon, speak. I think it's clear that Amanda Jaskowski made it clear that she is serving the state.
You can't bring...
Oh, I'm not supposed to do that?
Nope.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. Let me rephrase that. I think it's very important to understand that this board is meant to serve the community and not the state, number one. And I guess this actually relates to public comment. So, you know, you're trying to decide, you know, who can speak, when, that sort of thing. I just want to remind you about when we spent a whole year coming and pleading regarding masks, regarding the lockdowns. We parents came here in droves, and that was not just in this county, that was every county. And when Carroll County finally decided not to have the masks, what happened? The state took over. The state pulled their power, and they silenced not just our community, but every other county. And so effectively, you know, 20 people per county, what is that, over 100-something? They were all silenced, and only, what, 15 people could speak on Zoom? So please consider that when you decide who gets to speak. This is a community of parents, and we have to really think long and hard about who has authority over our children, the state or the parents. Now, that gets me to this. So, you can't believe in self-expression if you cancel or compel the speech of others who are exercising their free expression and personal beliefs. Those who revel in canceling, banning, or compelling or coercing speech are by definition authoritarian, okay? The flag policy is another issue that's happening. I would just like to say that I didn't have any problem with people in their classes flying whatever flag they wanted. What I do have a problem with is a nonprofit activist group coming in and basically forcing the hand of every teacher. That was a big mistake. I don't know who let that happen, but it just, it really, it really put a wrench in the gears here, and I think that is the biggest issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more speakers that did not fill out a card?
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, members of the Board of Education, and Commissioner Frazier. I'm Cindy Porter, President of CASE, representing education support professionals who are clericals, assistants, and LPNs across Carroll County Public Schools. As education support professionals, we spend our days working alongside certificated staff in our schools, always in support of the students. While many parents and other adults in our community can readily have a conversation about the teachers their children have or the teachers they themselves had, I wonder how many of those same adults even know about the support professionals in their children's schools and those their children interact with every day, let alone the scope of what we do each and every day. You can find members of the CASE Bargaining Unit in the front office welcoming and registering new families, making sure Lunchbox makes it to a student who left it at home or on the bus, updating parent pickup rosters for who knows what time, answering all phone calls and making sure all time cards are accurate and submitted. You'll also find members of our bargaining unit monitoring recess duty, accompanying students to the Career and Tech Center to help those students be successful, conducting a small group on the floor in kindergarten, working alongside students in the classrooms, helping some students to manage their severe behaviors, access the curriculum, and gain the skills they will need to succeed. CASE Support Professionals also make sure high school bathrooms and hallways are safe for all students, address medical needs of students, and most importantly, have those conversations and form those relationships to help everyone better understand the needs of our students in order to meet them where they are. These ESPs also communicate with teachers and other professionals in the school to do what they can to make sure we, as staff members, are doing everything in our power to help students succeed. Oh, and I can't forget that CASE Bargaining Unit members can also readily be found substituting in classrooms in every school in our county to try to maintain the continuity of learning. The duties I mentioned above are just the tip of the iceberg in the day of an education support professional in Carroll County Public Schools. Job description duties don't begin to give an accurate understanding of any support positions to include our fellow food service workers and maintenance staff. No matter the position, I encourage everyone to learn more about education support professionals and the roles we play in the education of the students of Carroll County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent McCabe, excuse me, board members, Commissioner. I am Sledge Jordan, President of CCA. Just make it work. A member recently said we should have T-shirts made with Carroll County Public Schools on the front and "Just Make It Work" on the back, because of how often our educators hear that phrase. A school held a faculty meeting on Yom Kippur, and part of the meeting was a mandatory training. Educators are told to be aware of Jewish High Holy Days and to adjust what we teach in class on those days. I would expect administrators to do the same and to not hold mandatory trainings or meetings. The training will have to be made up, affecting both the person who missed the training and the person who did the training. When will they find the time? They'll just have to make it work. A speech-language pathologist with a caseload of 47 students is asked to test three additional students to see if they qualify for services. The SLP is faced with a decision to test students or service the students already on the caseload. What is the SLP told? Just make it work. A special educator with a student who moved from another state with an IEP. The IEP from the other state says the student should have a one-on-one assistant. By the way, there's more than one child in this case across the county. They are told there needs to be testing to see if the student qualifies for one-on-one here in Carroll County. There are several such cases across the county of students with high needs. Educators are trying to meet those needs while still educating all students. What do these educators hear? Just make it work. Educators across the county who have asked for trainings to meet the needs of their students in the classrooms but have not received it. It could be training to adapt the curriculum for special needs. It could be change in how to handle discipline issues. Educators cannot be just told what something will look like without the actual training and/or time to make it happen. And what are these teachers told? Just make it work. A new educator recently told me their grandmother died, and they did not take their bereavement leave of three days. Why? Her response? Because my students need me, and I was afraid of the mess I would come back to after. They said they realized it was a mistake because they should have used the time to process their grief. No one directly told this educator to just make it work, but I will assure you they have heard that message enough times to internalize it. Our educators are professionals who are asked to do more and more each day, and nothing is being taken away from their jobs, just add it to them. Just make it work is the equivalent of putting a bandage on our arterial wound. It seems like you're doing something to stop the bleeding, but you really aren't. How do I know that? Because an additional training that was added to my job was how to stop the bleed in case, as an educator, I had to treat major wounds on students. Now, of course, not every classroom's equipped with a stop-the-bleed kit, so in the actual emergency that I might need to do that, I guess I'll just make that work, too. Thank you.
Next item is board member activities and correspondence, but before we do that, each board member has a paragraph to share with us.
Let's just wait and see if the room clears out first, so we don't get interrupted.
Okay, I'm honored to share that this is National Principals Month. October is National Principals Month, a time to celebrate excellence in school leadership and to recognize the critical role that principals play in school achievement and student success. Our principals are doing a tremendous job, leading our efforts to get back to normal and focus on teaching and learning. Thanks to all of our outstanding principals for their leadership, hard work, and dedication to our schools, students, and staff.
National School Bus Safety Week will be held during the week of October 17th through the 21st. I would like to read, but Mr. Kyler is going to read, a proclamation from the state of Maryland, and then I have another paragraph to say after that, sir.
Okay, this is from the governor of the state of Maryland. The state of Maryland proclamation, School Bus Safety Week, October 17th to 21, 2022. Proclamation. School Bus Safety Week, October 17th to 21, 2022. Whereas, Maryland Student Transportation Administrators and Operators remain diligent and committed to ensuring the safe transportation of nearly 700,000 students on a daily basis, and their efforts are critical to the operation and safety of our schools. Whereas, all school bus drivers and attendants employed or contacted by local education agencies, I assume that means contracted, must achieve rigorous and specialized training, as well as adhere to the highest standards of school bus safety. And during the school year, these fleets cover millions of miles, operate in a variety of weather conditions, and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present challenges they face. And whereas, Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing National School Bus Safety Week in all of our 23 counties, Bonhamore City, and Seed School of Maryland, and recognize the school bus drivers and attendants who connect their children to their school communities and keep Maryland students safe every day. Now, therefore I, Lawrence J. Hogan Jr., Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim October 17th to 21, 2022 as School Bus Safety Week in Maryland, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. It's signed by the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, and the Secretary of State.
And in Carroll County, we have designated Tuesday, October 18th, as Bus Driver and Bus Assistance Recognition Day. On behalf of the Board, I would like to thank them for their commitment to providing safe and efficient transportation for our childrens.
October 16th through 22nd has been designated as America's Safe Schools Week. Here in Carroll County, we continue to place an emphasis on improving school security to ensure that our schools are safe places to learn and teach. Thanks to Curtis Pierce, Brian Elliott, and Security Advisory Council, our resource officers, and local law enforcement for their leadership in keeping our students and staff safe and our buildings secure.
October is National Bullying Prevention Month, which aims to increase awareness and prevent the bullying of our children. Bullying comes in many forms, in our schools, in the community, and on social media, and its negative effects can last a lifetime. We all can help make a difference by identifying bullying behavior and supporting those who are bullied. If you, if your child is being bullied at school, please contact the school counselor or school administrator to share your concerns and to work together to address the issue.
This week, we are celebrating National School Lunch Week. Our food service employees do an excellent, exceptional job ensuring that our students have access to nutritious meals each day. A nutritious lunch and breakfast are important for our students, and contribute to their well-being and academic success. Thanks to all of our dedicated food service employees for serving our students and promoting healthy eating habits.
Thank you. And Ms. Teskey sent you, we're last on that. Do you mind going first on the correspondence and activities?
On September 20th, the Carroll County Student Government Association, or CCSGA, held a Board of Education Candidate Forum. We were honored to host this and be able to discuss topics that the students are genuinely concerned about and their questions, and bring these to the Board of Ed candidates to see how our potential candidates will work for us. I was also pleased to attend the MAEB Annual Conference on October 6th through the 8th. I gained more insight on Maryland Blueprint implementation, what that's going to look like in the budget, and also within policy. And also the purpose behind each pillar and how that's going to affect future goals beyond the Maryland Blueprint. I was accompanied by amazing individuals from student members, board members, superintendents, and keynote speakers, so thank you for this opportunity.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Kyler. Just a couple of quick things that I wanted to mention. The first was the Strategic Plan Work Session. I wanted to thank staff for the information that was pulled together there. I think it was really important for us as a Board of Education to kind of get back to the pillars of the strategic plan and focusing on student achievement. And, you know, with all of the, all of the problems and issues that were brought forth through the pandemic, and we basically just need to get past those and get back to focusing on student achievement. And, and I think that that work session was very helpful and eye-opening, and I'm hoping that we'll continue to have regular work sessions in that regard, you know, throughout the next couple of years, because it's meant to be a living document, as we know. And we just want to make sure that we, we get back to, back to the basics for our students. So I really appreciated that. And the other thing that I attended this month was the, the Family Life Committee meeting. We did have a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and that was to finalize the, the middle school revisions for the family life curriculum. That will be later on the agenda, so I look forward to the discussion on that particular topic. And I just want to, once again, thank the, the parents that are, that are part of that committee. It's a really good group, and very active and involved conversations when we get those folks together. So, thanks.
All right, I have a lot, so I'm going to try to go through it as fast as I can. I can talk fast. September 15th, I attended the Together We Unit Roundtable Discussion Regarding Needs of Some of Our Students. This amazing organization does do a lot for our underserved community. September 25th, I attended the Carroll County Farm Bureau Annual Picnic. September 28th was the CAC meeting. It was very well-attended. Thank you Superintendent Mrs. McCabe for being our guest speaker and talking about how the budget works, the blueprint, and answering questions from the community. October 1st, I attended the Career and Technology Celebration with my son. It was nice to see all the newness and anxious to see all the other new classes that are going to be opening up shortly. I also attended the Manchester Valley Basket Bingo that night for the class of 2023. We were here for October 3rd for the Strategic Work Session. I was not able to attend the MAEB Conference, and I thank you Dr. Dorsey and Superintendent McCabe for going, but I was preparing for homecoming. So I, that was, it was interesting that, to hear from all the students. They were happy we have some type of normalcy this year. So they're very excited that they got to attend homecoming. And of course, all those that are getting ready for the next two weeks or so, have fun with it and enjoy it and remember it. I was able to finish my last, my most recent college class of intelligence-led policing, and next week I began another psychology class. I will be attending a CARE Zoom meeting, which is with the Carroll County Health Department. October 29th is the Career and Technology Center Big Country Breakfast. Make sure to look up that information. It's a great breakfast. It's for a good cause. Of course, we have Halloween, and with November coming up too, we are going to be having off a day for Election Day, but also, we also need to remember to make sure we change our clocks back an hour, so nobody's late for school that Monday morning. October is a really important month for many different causes, but one of the most important ones to me is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I do continue to advocate women, and as well as men, to make sure you do your monthly self-exams, and make your annual exam checkups too. It is very important to make sure that you catch it early, so more preventative measures can, are better, are better off, you know, you're better off to, for have those. And I think that's it. Just make sure, continue supporting PTAs, PTOs, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, FFAs, four Hs.
I have a few things. September 16th, I got to go down to the STEAM Show in Arcadia, which is a great event and really growing. Career and Tech was there, and Tim Blizzard's class, and they put on great demonstrations. And as a, he wanted to make it an educational experience, so when the groups would demo, and then they would have assignments to go around the STEAM Show and come back and report on certain other things in it. So he, he kept them working all day. On the 20th, I attended Commissioner Rothstein's Town Hall, and that was interesting, great talk. Our superintendent and some staff was there and added to the meeting, and, and that was, that was a great meeting. October 3rd was the Strategic Plan Work Session. And I'd like to piggyback some of Ms. Savigny's comments. It's, it's time we get back to that, and, and the meat of our curriculum, and that we're here to educate students. And when I think about it, our public comments, which I value, and, and 20 times that we see emails and letters, other than just the public speakers, we, we see public information requests, we see other appeals, very, very few of them relate to classroom education and what's important for our students. And, and I think all of us need to get back on focus, like you said, to what we're here for, and it's educating students, not the other fun and games. Did an agenda review of staff in here, and that was great. October 6th, I went to the Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting, and the CEO Sage Policy Group, CEO of Sage Policy Group gave a report on the economy, and it's going to be challenging for the next few years. He made it very, very plain, and if any of you guys haven't seen him, he loves James Bond, and so a bunch of his topics, if, if you aren't into James Bond, you might not have known it, were movies or, or sayings. And his name, if I say it right, is Anabom, and he signed off as Bond, Anabom. So, you know, it's, he, he injects some humor into it as much as he can. He has some, he asked for questions, and he answered some very good questions. So that was a fun day. And that's it for me. Testing. All right, I'm back.
All right. I've been out and about, and I've been with these, these guys, except I didn't go to MAE. I was horse showing. I have duties and obligations at my horse farm. Kenny and I both, we did go to the STEAM Show, and it was really great to see those students out and about. And then this past weekend, I did support the Career and Tech Bull and Oyster Roast, and it was really nice to see a lot of people there, and I hope they made a lot of money for Skills USA. Coming down the pike, though, I really hope that everyone can tune in or be here for November 30th here. We definitely have a, a meeting coming up here that is very important to all. Parents, educators, students alike. It will be with a delegation. Also, we'll be talking about the blueprint. And let me tell you something. I don't know where all this money's going to come from, but I'm very concerned. And if we have to start out with $60,000 a year salary, I am not complaining about that. It's very well deserved. But then we also have to increase everyone else's salary, and they're forgetting that. And, and then if we do one group, we need to take care of all of our groups, because that's how this system works. We all work together. So I just want you to all put November 30th down on the calendar, because it is a very important meeting that night, and it will be a work session there with everyone. And I hope everyone is paying attention. So I wanted to get that out. And also, we're still waiting for the state test scores. We definitely need them. We're still floundering out there, and if any, I know they're watching. I know people from the state are watching. So please, get those tests out. And I don't know, I know you all were here, but last year in September, I received, I was waiting for a phone call from the state, and I'm still waiting for it. So I just wanted to let you all know that. It's been a year, and I still haven't received my, my phone call back. So, that's it.
Okay, and I'll just piggyback on your one comment about waiting for the test results. That was brought up at our conference, and I understand that it's not that they're deliberately withholding test results from us, but they're in the process of going through standard reviews, and the standard reviews take time. So that's the explanation that we're given. And hopefully we'll get those results as soon as possible, but we do know that they have to go through the standard review first. For my report this month, I too attended the Roundtable sponsored by Together We Own It. And Together We Own It is a nonprofit organization that works with children and families, hoping to break the cycle of trauma and provide a stable and supportive environment for each participant. The organization mentors children and connects families with support services that are available in our county. And one of the highlights from the Roundtable was actually listening to one of the students who had received services from this group. And again, this is a, a young adult now who is well on his way to becoming a productive, productive member of society. So it was really great to sort of end that discussion by hearing from one of the students who has benefited from that organization. On September 16th, I attended our county's Equity Council meeting. Our members had the opportunity, opportunity to meet with Superintendent McCabe and engage in a question-answer session. And during that meeting, we also reviewed our regional assignments and discussed support for all of the school liaisons. On September 29th, I attended a MAEB Conference Program Committee meeting. At that time, we finalized plans for the upcoming conference. On September 30th, I went back to Together We Own It, and at that point, they were having an open house, and I was able to tour the entire facility. On October 1st, I attended the Carroll County Career and Technology Center Open House, and it was great, together with members of the community, to view historical documents and displays, and then to tour the new classrooms. It was rewarding to see former students, as they were looking for their pictures in the many photo albums and awards that were on display. It was especially rewarding to watch as one former student, an adult now, pointed out her picture to her middle school child. And again, the, the center looks wonderful. It's a state-of-the-art facility that certainly makes us all proud. On the 3rd, I attended our Strategic Plan Work Session, and again, very engaging discussions, taking a look at our, our achievements to date. So looking forward to continue to work with our strategic plan. And finally, you all have referenced the MAEB Conference. Well, from October 6th through 8th, I attended our annual conference, and the conference was well-attended by local school board members and educational leaders from around the state. I'm grateful that Superintendent McCabe and Student Representative Emily Tedeschi were able to attend the conference as well. After a dynamic keynote address, there was a forum panel on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, followed by forum breakout sessions, each dealing with a part of the blueprint. On our second day, we had pertinent workshops and hot topics, and I am grateful for the outstanding team of Amy Gramada, Kathy Green, and Chris Tobias, who presented a session on sources of strength. There was a lot of interest in this model from board members around the state. So they did an excellent job. They were very well-received, and I thank them for their time, presentation, and for representing our school system so well. And it sounds like a number of board members are really interested in, in trying to get this model in their systems. On our final day of conference, we had a student panel, and those students shared their voices on a number of topics. And just as a wrap-up, our Conference Planning Committee members are going to be meeting next month. We'll take a look at the conference evaluations, and we'll debrief the entire conference and make plans for moving forward. So again, I think MAEB had an excellent conference this year, and again, I was so pleased that it was so very well-attended. Thanks.
Dr. Dorsey, I want to thank you for that explanation, but I am telling you, it is an injustice, not only to Carroll County students, but all students in the state for not having those scores back, because that's how we base, how we progress.
Superintendent's Report. Mrs. McCabe?
Congratulations to Lily Sellers, a 2022 graduate of South Carroll High School, for receiving the award in the high school category at the Virtual Student Artwork Exhibit presented by First Lady Yumi Hogan and the Maryland State Arts Council. Lily created an acrylic painting entitled "Lost In." Her art teacher, Lisa Katz, says that Lily's talent and curiosity pushed her to explore beyond expected outcomes, and that her work is creative and introspective. Lily is currently studying at the Art Institute of Chicago. I would also like to take a moment to congratulate and thank our Carroll County Teacher of the Year, Erica McAndrew, from Year, Erica McAndrew, from Spring Garden Elementary School. Erica was celebrated, along with the Teachers of the Year from all Maryland school systems, during a special program last week. We are very proud to have her represent Carroll County Public Schools as she participates in activities and events throughout the state during the next year.
Thank you. Thank you. No presentations this evening. We have one report, which is the School Construction Report. Mrs. McCabe?
This is the Monthly School Construction Report. We do have the CIP budget transfer to finalize the budget for the Career and Tech Center project later on in the agenda for action. Mr. Marx is available if you have any other questions.
Ms. Herbert?
Mr. Marx, how are we doing on that washing machine for the foods area? Because I know they need a special washing machine that takes the oil out, and I know they have chemicals and all that, so I was just checking on that to see where we are.
No problem. It's a good time. They were discussing it at a furniture meeting earlier today, and we're down to picking some models that are in stock that we can replace the other one with. We were also researching, could we adapt the other washing machine? But I think it's better we just buy, one is commercial, that's like the other one.
Right, because I know they have to have those chemicals come in.
Correct.
And you just can't buy a washing machine.
Right.
Okay, thank you, because I know they definitely need it.
Yeah, they need it. We'll take care of them.
Thank you.
You got it.
Board members, any other questions? Do we have any other public comments? Then we're into action items. The first action item is the approval of appointments. I need a motion to approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
I have one recommendation for appointment this evening. I'm recommending that Mr. Greg Killian be promoted from art teacher at Carrolltown to Assistant Supervisor of Fine Arts.
Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Action Items.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
The monthly Personnel Action Items contain four new hires and one promotion.
Board members, any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
The next action item, I need a motion for the ratification of the master agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
I am pleased that we've reached an agreement with AFSMI and have been informed that the AFSMI membership has ratified the tentative agreement. The new agreement is now brought to you for your ratification. Ratification with AFSMI completes negotiations from last year, and we can now begin to prepare for this year's process.
Board members, any comments, questions?
And again, it is a clarification that it is the first day of July 2022, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it looks like the two is a strike-through on my copy, and a three is in bold.
Yeah, I know you questioned that date earlier in the week, but...
It absolutely is effective this July for this fiscal year. So before we go to final print or format, which goes on the website and out to the schools, we'll make 100% sure that that covers correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to point out, like, I completely agree with you. It looks like it's changing it to 2023, so I think we should probably vote on it as amended to be 2022, correct?
Okay. So all those in favor of the corrected copy?
It's fiscal year 23.
But it says this agreement entered into this first day of July 2022, and it has the two crossed out and becoming a 23, so I think it's, I think it should be 2022.
Right.
Would you rather I say clarified copy?
As long as we know it's fiscal year 23, which began on the July 1st, 2022.
Yes, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I need a motion for the approval of the High School Program of Studies. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Mrs. McCabe?
The 2023-24 High School Program of Studies was brought for discussion last month. Mr. Wernick is here to cover the highlights prior to your final approval this evening.
Good evening, board members. Again, we look at this as a playbook for our students, to really support their educational programming through Carroll County Public Schools and beyond, you know? And so it's really an applicable process for them to use. They can actually use it within our website. They can click on many of the links, so this is actually a live document. It wouldn't be possible without, you know, the support of, you know, the curriculum supervisors, working with student services, the Director of High Schools, putting this together so that we have the most applicable courses for our students to prepare them for college and career readiness. As you look, some of the courses that, you know, that are new and unmanned aircraft systems over at Career and Tech Education, it's some of the programs that are, you know, relative to today's world, relative to the careers that are out there for our students to advance in. As you also look at this document, what I find really useful is just for parents and our students getting to know how to use this book, the supports that Naviance has, and it talks about Naviance and support of that, how career paths really support our students, you know, the different types of career paths that they can take, as well as other programs such as dual enrollment. What does dual enrollment look like, the process of students being able to take college courses at the Carroll Community College in 11th and 12th grade? What does also honors and advanced placement courses look like on page 21? And then there was actually something that was added this year. Right after I presented last month, there was actually, you can find it on page 20, a paragraph that talks about FAFSA. It's Maryland State Bill 64, and we've been asked through all districts to support our students with completing the federal student aid applications to support them as they get into college. So that was something hot off the press that I just added, so in transparency, that was the only part that was just added. But we thought it was useful for our parents and for our students to know that we're there to support them, you know, even as they venture to, you know, college in the future. Are there any other questions?
Any questions or comments, board members? Ms. Sevigny?
Thank you, Mr. Wernick. I did have a couple of questions that centered around the science curriculum, towards the back, starts on page 126. And it looks like the descriptions for all of the science classes have changed, primarily around talking about, you know, the next-generation science standards, and then talking about things that, kind of understanding the phenomena that occur in their everyday lives. It seems to be a common theme that's kind of in all of the descriptions. And what I wanted to understand was, how is, so I understand the descriptions are changing, but is the content really changing that dramatically for any of these classes based on the next-generation standards?
So when we're looking at the next-generation science standards, it's no longer looking at just science in the past. It's really how is science applicable to our students today and beyond, as they're looking to become scientists, as they're looking to explore, you know, the world, you know, through chemistry, through biology, through earth science. You know, what is it that we really need to look at in today's world and then change? So it's, the next-generation science standards is really focused on where are we at today and where will we be in the future to support our students as they continue to grow, you know, to become college students, to become career path students. So it's really all about how does it affect them in the world today? And so that's the difference. It's no longer about how did science evolve? It's all about where are we at with science and how does it affect us moving forward? Does that answer your question?
It kind of does. I mean, is it possible to see the, is the link to the next-generation science standards available online, like on the website?
Absolutely. It's also in our framework. So if you look in our science scope and sequence and framework, it is there. And so, in all reality, the courses haven't changed much. It's more just a modernized version of the courses. And instead of looking at, as I said, looking at it from a past lens, it's looking at it for a futuristic lens.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, there's a lot of components of science that are fixed, and you need to understand those basic foundational concepts, right? So, but I understand, like, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that it wasn't changing that dramatically from what, you know, we understand science, you know, foundations to be, making sure it wasn't more of like an advocacy focus.
No, it's not. It's the foundations are there, but then how are we using it, you know, to support science currently?
Right. Okay.
Mrs. Herbert?
First of all, thank you for undertaking this, because this has been unbelievable amount of work. Is South Carroll the only school in the county that does the gymnastics now?
I believe so.
Okay. I just, I saw it was still offered, and I thought that was the only school in the county still doing it. Okay. All right.
Did you teach gymnastics, Ms. Herbert?
Yes, I did. I had to, when you went to, yes, yes. Yeah, and I can't wait to talk about health later on. I taught that too.
Ms. Tedeschi?
I think this inclusion of the FAFSA information is great, and I'd actually love to see it expanded furthermore on the requirement of completing this. That's, as somebody who's the first in my family to go to college, that's not a common understanding. Also, if we could further detail the date that this opens up, the date it's, you know, typically due around, just give some more guidance on that, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Ms. Sevigny?
Oh, and I was gonna say, that would be helpful from a parent's perspective, too. So even though my kids won't be the first in the generation, I didn't have to fill out FAFSA's when I was going to college. So it's, you know, helpful to, for the parents.
And FAFSA is open up now. It has already opened up, so please make sure that you, you know, you begin that process.
Right. I did just have one other comment about Career and Tech. I'm not sure if this is the right place to bring it up, but we had, we talked, in the past, we had asked on several occasions for understanding the rubric for being accepted into Career and Tech. And I'm not sure that we've, we've ever really seen that, although we've requested it on multiple occasions. So I think it would be really helpful for us as a board to see that, maybe in the context of the strategic plan or...
We actually have it on the November agenda. Is it the November agenda, Mr. Shatner?
Okay, okay.
It's November or December. We've already added it to the agenda.
It actually would be December. November is gifted and talented events. Correct.
Yeah, and it will be, yeah, it'll be in December. It'll be in the form of a presentation. So we'll be able to present what it looks like now, and you'll be able to have discussion and make any recommendations you may have.
Okay, that's fantastic. I think if we can get back to a rhythm of having a presentation every month on a specific topic, so it sounds like November will be GNT and Advanced Academics and then Career and Tech. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And piggybacking that question, one of the things, and I won't be here in December, but one of the things that I've wondered is, we have some classes that get full, we have some classes that aren't, and I'd love to see homeschool children be eligible. That is a state rule. That's a state law. That's nothing this board can change, correct?
Correct. The state says that a student cannot be enrolled in more than one school or program at the same time. So when a student enrolls in homeschooling, that becomes their educational program, and then they're not, they cannot enroll in any other program at the same time. So in order to participate in Career and Tech, they would have to be a student in our program here in Carroll County.
By law?
Yes.
Okay.
How do we work that with Littlestown School District? They pay so much per student, correct?
Yes, that's a different situation.
There's a tuition rate for both out of county and out of state that we have to compile and submit to MSD every year. We have a standing memorandum of agreement with Littlestown that if there are available slots, so first our kids have that option and that choice, if there are available slots and they transport, then their students can fill those available slots, and they pay the full tuition rate for those slots.
Could a homeschool family also pay that fee and do it? Or is that restricted by the law?
That's not the historic practice of the law, but I'm looking at Mr. Emili. I'd have to do some research to...
So I think that... We would have to work out some kind of agreement. I mean, if we could accept kids from Littlestown, we could accept kids elsewhere. But usually, that's done by a tuition agreement or some other thing. Now, the question is, there's a difference that you would charge in tuition for somebody who resides in the county compared to somebody out of county. So I'm not sure why you would even charge tuition to somebody who lives in the county if they're county residents. It opens up a whole can of worms. I'm not aware of anything in the regulation that prohibits us from working something out. I know that in some counties, they allow private school students to enroll in Career and Technology. Again, on a space-available, first-come, first-served basis. There is one case involving the Allegheny County Board of Education that was decided probably 20 years ago, where Allegheny made the decision not to allow homeschool students and private school students to participate in extracurricular activities, and the court upheld that decision, saying that's within the local prerogative of the school system. So it's really a complicated policy question that, you know, you would have to consider because, you know, you're either in or you're out, you know? And, but the opening up of the Career and Technology Center on a tuition basis to kids from another state kind of, you know, raises a question of access and equity.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Kyler, were you hearing requests from the community for something like that?
Oh, yeah, a bunch, a bunch. And one of the moms who has 11 children, she's homeschooled. I think one or two did a couple years in CCPS because she thought it was necessary, and she said, "I'd pay," you know? "I just want to be allowed." I think it's a good option for us. So, and then I've heard it from some of the homeschool networks, but I've always said, "I thought it was a state law, we had no choice."
Mr. Kyler, there is a state regulation that prohibits people from participating in sports, and that's a Maryland Public Secondary School Athletic Association regulation. And you have to be a student enrolled and attending that particular school. But I'm not aware of a specific regulation that applies in other contexts, and it's, I believe, a matter that's within the prerogative of the local board.
Thank you.
I know we do open up some of the Career and Technology classes to colleges, the community college, correct? Like, the community college will use the space?
They may use the space after hours.
Yeah, yeah, after hours, like an after, like an adult program in the evenings. Is there any way we could look into something like that if they wanted to? I mean, I know we're opening a whole new can of worms here, I know, but you brought it up. It's all your fault.
You're welcome.
The only thing I'd add, to echo what Mr. Emili said, is it's a complex or complicated policy question. There's liability in indemnification language in those agreements with other entities or body politic, but, you know, it's hard to think through what that would look like for a set of parents on a one-by-one basis. It's probably something better to be researched than then...
Yes, yes, yeah. No, I think if that can be researched, that'd be super.
Yeah, because I think, just like the college, they have to have a certified teacher in that particular field. It's not just anybody can come in and do the welding. Those are certifications that you have to have in order to be able to...
Okay, since I got us off-topic, are there any other questions on this motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We next need a motion for the Award of Bids. Second?
I'll put it.
Okay. Mrs. McCabe?
Okay, there are three items on the monthly Award of Bids. First is an award for the services of the board's chief negotiator for this year. Second is an award to furnish and install steamers at five schools. This is through the Food Services Program Fund. And lastly, an award to furnish and install 24 refrigerators, freezers at 22 schools. This also is through the Food Services Program Fund. This also is through the Food Services Program Fund.
And I'll stay on topic. Can you just mention food services? Two of the three are for that. That comes out of their budget, which is, is and has been profitable.
Correct, and it's sort of, it's the closest thing we have to an enterprise fund where it's self-funded and self-sustaining, and it's been very profitable, particularly during the time period in, in the pandemic when the feds, federal government relaxed the regulations. And Mrs. Sarno actually has to have a plan to effectively use some of that money and one-time measures such as this that maintain and improve the program are good ways to do that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We now need a motion for the approval of curriculum guides.
So moved.
Second? Mrs. McCabe?
At the September meeting, the 2022-23 curriculum guides were brought for discussion, and Mr. Wernick highlighted revisions. They now return for your approval this evening.
There were also two revisions that I had that we changed on the curriculum guides. We changed advanced academics to gifted and talented, as well as made a note within the health education that moving forward, starting this year, that it would actually be two half-credit courses instead of a, a full course. It would be Health One and Health Two, both .5, and it actually is stated in the curriculum revisions document.
So that takes care of your question, correct?
And I want to thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
So, Mr. Kyler, can I... Ms. Herbert, I know that that kind of, the note addressed the comments. I just want to be careful of what we're actually approving, right? Because in the, in the left-hand column, it says health education, one-credit high school course, but that's not actually what it is. It's, it's Health One is a half-credit and Health Two is a half-credit.
If you look at the document, it actually was revisions for 21-22, which was last year. So these were, what took place last year. So in the revision date, it was actually January 22 to the summer of 22, which has passed. So you're actually looking at and voting on what took place last year, and that's why we made that comment with moving forward with this current year, there are two half-credit classes moving forward.
Changed it.
Okay, yeah, I, I understand, like, through the note, and, and this is just form maybe over substance, but just want to make sure that we didn't misunderstand what we were approving. So maybe, maybe next year, like, I think it's fine approving it like this, but if, maybe next year, if we can say, but we're approving, like, this is, so this is what was piloted in 21-22, but this is what we're approving for 22-23 or 23-24.
Last month, I actually brought those to you for review, and so they'll actually be approved next year.
Okay. So what we are actually approving here is just to move forward with developing the curriculum supporting...
It's just, it's a little confusing.
Right.
It is confusing. But you're, you're cleaning it up, so that's, that's the only thing. And then we have the, they're all half-credits.
Correct, absolutely.
Ms. Patagia? You're covered?
Yep.
Board members, any other questions or comments?
I did have one more. Just under the, the middle school health for six to eight, it's in sort of the middle of page two. It says revising the curriculum to align with the MSD pre-kindergarten through high school Maryland Comprehensive Health Education Framework. Could we just add a note here, and it doesn't change anything that we're approving, but can we just specifically state that no family life changes were made to the, the middle school curriculum for, to align, so the, the Maryland Comprehensive Health Education Framework, there were no changes to the family life portion as part of this. I just want to make certain that we're not confusing, you know, continuing to confuse the public as to when those changes go in.
Absolutely.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
As long as we just add some verbiage to that effect, I'm, I'm fine with it then.
Ms. Patagia?
I do want to thank Ms. Tobias and yourself, you know, for making sure naloxone training is in our health curriculum as well, as well as other lifesaving measures. I mean, these are things that unfortunately our students deal with sometimes on a daily basis in their families and in their homes, so I'm just glad that we are making sure our students get these services to have.
Absolutely. So Health One, they actually have the signs and symptoms, and then when they get to Health Two, they actually are certified and have a letter to take to the health department to get their certification.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it was just, one other question of, we had talked a bit about CPR and AED certifications, you know, if they could be made part of Health Two rather than Health Three. I know that that's not going to be part of this recommendation, but just wanted to make sure we don't lose sight of that, of seeing if there was something that we could do with regard to that in the future.
Certainly. So currently, Health One, they actually have the hands-on compressions. Health Two, they actually have the CPR, they get the full battery, but they aren't certified for the card. So we are looking into certification, and the cost is around $33,000 each year for the certification because it's actually an online course as well as the card that they would get, and you pay for that as well, as well as certification.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the acceptance of the independent auditor report.
So moved.
One of you want to be the second? Okay, Mrs. McCabe?
Every local school board is required to have an annual audit of its financial transactions and accounts conducted in compliance with state regulations. Your approved firm, Clifton Larson Allen, has completed our FY22 audit. I am pleased to share that the audit report is clean. It has been reviewed by your appointed audit committee and recommended for your acceptance this evening. The audit may be accessed on our website.
Board members, any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mrs. McCabe?
We are required by state regulation to submit an annual comprehensive maintenance plan to the IAC. The criteria for the plan were revised last year by the state, so this is the second year we are working from those revised standards.
Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Vigney?
Mr. Kyler, I do have a couple of questions. I know that last year, this, the format of this report changed, and it changed pretty dramatically from what we had produced years prior to that. So I, one of the things that I noticed that is no longer provided, was there used to be, like, vehicle maintenance information, where we kind of were able to keep track of the fleet and how it was aging and, and what needs we might have for that? I know that this is just a state-required report and that we, we, do we track things differently internally? Or is this pretty much what we manage from?
In terms of the vehicles in particular, or...
For any of it, but vehicles in particular, like, where would we see visibility to that? Because it is something that gets impacted by our CIP plan every year and, and purchasing,
Well, I mean, we could, we could provide more information about that. It's just not included in the report, so if...
The state doesn't require it?
Yeah, it's not required. We, we did trim some of the report, some of the annual plan to include the information they wanted and some information we, we felt was perhaps extraneous, but we could always add, add that back in, if you like. I mean, we could take a look back at what we used to report and, and add that back in.
Okay, I'm just trying to think, you know, every year, at the end of the year, when we try to clean things up in June, and if there's any available funds left, we've been trying to purchase or replace cars in the fleet that are very aged and maintenance-heavy.
Sure.
So I'm just curious, where, where would we have visibility to that from a capital cost perspective?
We, we could produce that however and, and wherever you want. So it historically was here for, for Ray's fleet. We, we have that fleet maintained through independent contract for our staff vehicles. We actually have a contract with county maintenance up by the airport that, that they maintain what Mike calls the white fleet, the staff cars that PPWs have and other staff members. So we have all the records, we would have all the work orders. I think it would just be a matter of whatever the board would like to see, whether it's once or twice a year or in an ongoing way, or whatever you'd be interested in.
I mean, and I don't want to put more work on staff, you know, if it's something that's available, but maybe if it's just something we could take a quick look at before, like, when any requests would come to, to replace.
Have the maintenance records for the vehicle that's being replaced.
Right.
That's great, we can do that.
Okay.
And while you've raised that, I might add one other thing of sort of an internal partnership. The good folks at Career and Tech Center approached us this year, and finally, as an organization, we connected the dot that we surplus those vehicles on public auction after we replaced them, but they buy vehicles for students to work on each year. So this year, for the first time, some of the vehicles that would otherwise go out for public auction are being donated, for lack of a better term, from us to our Career and Tech Center for the, for the students to work on. In some cases, they may keep them for a while and work on them, in other cases, they may repair them to a level where they do go then out on public auction. So that's, that's a new thing that, that's now happening with the surplus vehicles that are placed.
That's fantastic. That is fantastic.
And it's somewhat shameful that someone like me never thought of that until...
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mr. O'Neil, or if we, Mr. Prokop, I was just looking on page seven, which talks about custodial staffing. That was something that, that we keep track of. We, we looked at staffing in the, sort of the old format of the reporting and also the new format, but it looks like we increased custodial staff by, by four members this year, according to the report.
Yeah, the, yes, that's what it appears, but that's not the case. On page six is the actual job titles and actual FTE for each of those job titles. That's, that's what the, our, the system, that's directly from the, the, what is it? Personnel management system that we have. These tables are interpretations of the, of those job titles to be able to calculate this data. And so there's, there's, there is a difference between the two, but if you look at page six, compare it to last year's page six, it only shows those two FTE that were included for career in tech.
Okay, that, that's what I was going to ask, because I knew we had approved the two for career in tech, but this was looking like four, so that's why I was trying to understand the discrepancy there.
Yes, and we're, we're still trying to understand exactly what, what, what the state wants us to include in these calculations, because there's certain positions that shouldn't be counted, perhaps towards a square foot calculation, drivers, a repair technician, things like that. There's some differences in that. So, so as, as was noted earlier, this is the second year we're going about this. We're still trying to reconcile that, and we had to gather 10 years' previous data, so it becomes a little difficult to make sure you're pulling the right numbers of people. So that's why these tables on page seven might, might differ somewhat from the ones on six.
Okay, okay.
So six, I've been assured that we have not added any additional FTE except for the two.
Those two, okay.
We added those two, and I, I don't know that I can be certain of the fiscal year standing here right now. I think it was fiscal year 13, but it might not have been. We cut 29 FTE of custodians in one of those budget reduction years. So we're back at that 27 overall, and we shifted their square footage ratio as we did that. And we did another thing that I'm not sure the ASME bargaining unit is in love with. We shifted some FTE, not all, but some of those positions became split FTE between a couple of different schools, which the feedback I get is that neither school believes that serves them well, but that was the compromise made.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, the, the level of custodial staff that we have is, is a completely different debate that can be had. I just wanted to understand whether we had actually hired four, because I thought it was only two, so just appreciate that clarification. Okay, thank you.
Board members, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of fiscal year '24 capital budget and fiscal year '25 through '29 capital improvement program request. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. McCabe?
We have had many focused capital conversations lately, including the proposed CIP being presented for discussion at last month's meeting. At that time, Mr. Kane provided highlights of revisions. With your approval this evening, the CIP will be provided to both the county and state for consideration in their respective budget processes.
Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Vigney?
I have a, a couple of quick questions. Under number four item of the, the pre-kindergarten additions, how many, how many schools are we looking at, including in that feasibility study?
I believe it's six, 15, I believe. The, the schools that are in the capital plan for kindergarten additions are not included because if we move ahead with the kindergarten additions, the pre-K room would be a part of that anyway. And the Robert Moten best addition, if we're going to do an addition again for the best program, we would look to do the pre-K at the same time, so we wouldn't need a study to look at really how that would work, assuming that we're moving ahead with those other five additions that are in the capital plan.
Okay, so those, the, the pre-K will be rolled into those other five individual kindergarten addition...
Right.
Reviews, okay. But then every other elementary school will have a component in the, the pre-K?
The, the study would look at the, the remaining elementary schools.
Okay, okay. And that can all be, that can be done for $200,000, we think?
At, at the, at the basic conceptual level of where the addition would go, kind of just a general idea, yeah, that's what we believe. If we wanted to go further as far as really investigating the site and things, it would, it would probably cost more, but just to get a sense of, of where the additions would go and a general idea of how much they would cost, yeah, we believe we can do it for that.
Okay, if the site supports an addition and where it would go and about how much...
It's more of a scope study level. It's not quite as detailed as what we call a feasibility study, so...
Okay, okay. So the, the other five elementary schools, those would be a full feasibility study, but the, the, the remaining pre-K one would be a little bit abbreviated?
So the remaining five schools were, in the capital plan, were asking for design funding from the county in FY24. So based on the plan that is before you tonight, we would be seeking design money to actually start designing in the kindergarten additions, and we would incorporate the pre-K classroom as a part of that addition. So we wouldn't do a study for those.
Okay.
If, if the design isn't funded, or if the board wished to change that direction, then we could change with the feasibility study. We could incorporate those schools and then push the design of the kindergarten additions out another fiscal year, but that's totally up to the board.
No, I don't think that, no, I just wanted to understand the difference between the two.
Yeah, and I was looking at a number for pre-K. It looks like for 16 elementary schools is what's in the, the one budget...
The feasibility study.
Yeah, for 16 elementary schools for the pre-K.
So, okay.
On page 13 is where I pulled that from the capital budget.
It's in the, it's in the description, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, because our feasibility studies have typically run in about the $100,000 level for one school, maybe two schools. That's why I was trying to understand if $200,000 was really meant to cover the other 16 elementary schools, but it's a bit abbreviated.
Yeah, this would be more similar to the Health Suite study that we did, where they looked at 30 schools as far as how they could make modifications to the Health Suite. So that was, I forget, 150 to 200. This would be more along those lines. Obviously, when we go out to the, to the market and, and go out to the architects and they give proposals and prices, you know, it, it could be different. It could, it's always possible that it could come in higher than expected, but we believe that number should be sufficient.
Okay, gotcha. And then I did have, just, you know, we had, when we had talked about the FCI score over time, we were basically saying, you know, we needed an infusion of, you know, 45 to 50 million of capital every year in order to kind of keep up, right?
Right.
With the FCI score. And I just, I noticed that there, there's a bit of a timing issue in FY27 and '28, where we're, we've only got requests for 32 million in '27, but then it pops up to 67 million in '28. And so that's still, like, if you average those out, it's still the, the right amount. But do we have any concerns with the timing issue with how that would go to the commissioners or, you know, commitment of funding?
The, the, there's been, at this point in the process, we haven't had any concerns. Obviously, this plan builds on last year's plan that... Obviously, this plan builds on last year's plan that was submitted. And then we obviously met with the commissioners, staff, management, budget. You know, the timing of the projects, really, there hasn't been any concern. We'll begin meeting with county management and budget staff next week, actually, to talk about the request. And if the financial situation at the county has changed, obviously, they would express that. But it's an ongoing dialogue, so at this, this juncture, there's been no concern about that. As far as meeting actually 40 or 50 million every year, the way the projects work, it, it never comes out to exactly that. It's, you know, one year might be 80 million, the next year might be 30, just depending on the projects and the, in the schedule and the size of those projects, so.
And I'm disappointed that our commissioner left, because this was really where I kind of wanted the commissioner. But, um, but just a, a question about, um, so the William Winchester modernization, that's looking like a grand total of about 52 million. And that is a significant jump up from what we were saying, you know, elementary school modernizations would cost about five years ago, right? Like, that's probably more than double what we were saying in elementary school modernization might cost five years ago. So, just wanted to understand if that's kind of the magnitude going forward.
So typically, just so you have a general idea, the construction costs, and this is over the last probably 60 years, typically double every decade. If you think about cost of a lot of things, they typically double every decade. It's just the nature of the economics. So, when this project would be done out in fiscal year '28, it is about double what it would have been when we talked about those things. So it's just the nature of the, the price of things.
Right. Well, I, I think the law of economics is that it doubles every 15 on, on average, but, um, and that, that's with reasonable interest rates environment. We were in a very low inflation, interest rate and inflation environment for, for that last period of time, but with COVID and inflation now, like, I was just, because this has more, more than doubled in six years.
So if you look at actual, yeah, if you look at construction costs, building construction costs in schools specifically, it, it, it's been, you could go back and look, it's, it's doubles about every 10 years. Maybe it's 12 years, some years, sometimes it's eight years. But now, whether building construction is different than the rest of economics, that's more in-depth than I can go into. But generally, when looking at it, talking to folks, uh, who do this, and, you know, the state level, the county level, the management budget folks, and the budget people at the state, that's not outside of, you know, and, and it, I, I think a lot of people, it's struggle with, a million dollars sounds like a lot, but a million dollars today isn't the same as 1980.
Oh, yeah.
So like, like, millions of dollars always sounds like a lot, but the reality of today's world, it's not a lot, not, not anywhere near as much as it would have been 20, 20 years ago.
Yeah, that's why I just wanted to make sure that we were kind of expectation-setting properly for folks, because with, with COVID, having really jacked the prices of everything, inflation on the rise, like, you, we're really seeing it in these numbers. And so it's just going to be additional conversations and expectation-setting, I think, maybe at a different level when we're talking with the commissioners, because there's going to definitely be some sticker shock here, so.
Just letting you know.
Okay, but thanks. Thank you for that clarification.
Board members, any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of fiscal year CIP budget transfer.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Mrs. McKay?
We discussed this item last month on the construction report and indicated that we would be bringing a CIP adjustment for your action at this board meeting to finalize the budget for the Career and Tech Center project. The cover sheet for this item goes into much more specific detail, but I'll provide a brief summary. Back in June of 2020, when the board approved the award for the construction contract for the Career and Tech Center, we also discussed options for various additive alternatives to the project. Of the 3.5 million in adults, the board elected to move forward with 1.9 million in specific items. At that same time, the board approved some recommended cost savings to the project, including $856,000 in value engineering items and reductions to the furniture and equipment and owner contingency line items of $500,000 and $100,000 respectively, as these two line items fall within the board's sole control. At that time, we discussed that we could bring a CIP transfer at that time to increase the budget or wait until later to have a clearer picture on the outlook of the four-year construction timeline. At this time, we believe it is appropriate to bring the proposed CIP transfer to finalize the Career and Tech Center project budget. The transfer includes moving funds from several other projects that are now closed out. The transfer has been reviewed with county staff.
Mrs. Herbert?
I don't know who can answer this, but I just want to make sure that I know we had 1.1 million for furniture, and I know we spent 980,000 on that. Will we have then enough then to continue on and, and hope that we can get through phase two and phase three? Will we have enough money for that?
We believe at this point that this should round out the complete project.
Okay, all right. I, I just know, it, it's not like furnishing an elementary school with desks and chairs. I mean, we have big things that we have to, you know, big printers, big presses. And it's just not, not like chairs and desk.
We're not without nervousness, and we're working and monitoring.
I understand that.
Trying to time things. And you'll, in the future meetings, you'll see us being nervous about other components of other projects.
I understand.
The, the good news is that furniture and equipment and contingency, as Ms. McCabe said, are the two things that are within your purview. You don't need to go back to other agencies to, to fund, but, but we believe and hope that this gets us to the end of this project.
Great.
And a four-year project's a little dicier than a normal project.
Yes, just what, what has happened the last year with prices and inflation and interest rates.
Right.
Mrs. Sevigny?
Yeah, I was just, um, curious to know if this, I, so we have a, a set of projects that we're pulling down, the, the additional funds that are sitting out there for those. Are there any remaining after this, or does that exhaust all of the, the project remaining funds that were out there?
That, that won't, and if Ms. Bowers would scroll up, it would be visible. That, that doesn't exhaust all of your active project accounts. This represents projects that are beyond things like warranty, and we, we believe are up and running sufficiently that we're comfortable moving, moving these funds. And the county, uh, staff seems to be in agreement with that, so. And, and for capital funds, once allocated to you, they remain with you, even if they eventually move from one project to, to a future or different project. That would be something that would happen eventually anyway. At the time you approved this, this construction award, the question was, should we try to do this now or later? And it's just, you know, while we're at it, it's just sort of chance that the 1.9 million you approved in ad alternates turns out to be the numbers, a similar number that we're moving in now. It's, that's not a direct correlation. We've had good experiences on the project, and we've had some overages on the project. And coincidentally, those numbers are kind of lining up here tonight.
Right, I mean, I guess what I was trying to understand was, you know, there's what, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight projects that were, that were drawing those funds that are past warranty and we feel comfortable releasing them to this new project.
Yes.
Are there any other projects out there that are still in this situation that we haven't drawn from?
That are being, where we would feel comfortable moving? I'll look to Ray and see if he has, no, the answer is no.
No, this sort of exhausts all of them. Okay. I was just curious if there was still anything remaining out there, depending on what happens with the East Middle project as, as we move forward.
But there will be eventually, as projects move to commissioning, through commissioning and warranty. So it's, you know, it's, it's not the end, it's just where we are in a moment.
The roof and the HVAC projects that were, that are in the cycle right now.
In the pipeline, in the cycle.
Right, okay, right.
Board members, any other comments or questions? Um, and this is actually budget transfer 23-01. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now I need a motion for the approval of fiscal year 2023 CIP budget adjustment 23-02.
So moved.
I'll second.
Mrs. McKay?
The Maryland Center for School Safety and the, and the IAC Release Funds under the School Safety Grant Program on a timeline outside of the CIP process. Therefore, we're bringing for your approval this CIP budget adjustment of $240,000 in grant funds. These funds will be applied to CCPS surveillance camera upgrades based on priorities determined by the CCPS School Security Office and vetted through the Security Advisory Council.
Board members, any questions or comments? You sure?
I'm positive.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I now need a motion for the approval of the Family Life Advisory Committee Opt-Out Recommendations for Grade 6, 7, and 8 Family Life Unit.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
And, oh, Mrs. McCabe, sorry, I almost skipped you.
This item reflects the work from the Family Life Advisory Committee to develop the Opt-Out Recommendations for the Middle School Family Life Unit. Mr. Wernick is available for any questions.
Board members, comments or questions? Mrs. Herbert?
Hold on. I taught health for a long time, and I did do the family life unit. And we had all the presentations where the parents would come in, look at the books, see the curriculum, use, see our devices, see what, um, we had for handouts. I really have a really difficult time with this one section. With teaching that for such a long time and still being engaged in the community, there's a time and a place for everything. And I think parents need to discuss some of this at home and not taught by a teacher in a group of, let's see, eighth graders. They are, what, 13, 14-year-olds? And I will tell you right now, I don't think they need to be talking about solo sex, anal sex, oral sex, and I really don't think that is necessary to be in there. I'm old-timey, but I have been through the ranks. And I personally, and talking to parents, that should be done at home. There are certain things that need to be done at home. Now, you also have the choice of taking the other class, and then parents don't have to do anything. You know, you have that choice. But I personally think, from teaching that for many years and being out in the community, I, I just really have a hard time with that. Yes, there are STDs, there are, you do have other things that go on. But I just think some of this stuff needs, and I, you know, parents have told me, things need to be done at home. And that's my, you know, I just want to relay what people are telling me. So I, I might be out of touch, I don't think so, because I've talked to a lot of parents. And also me experiencing, um, you know, teaching actual health. I had one parent, got to tell you this, though, they called me a sex therapist one day, and I said, "No, I'm not a sex therapist, I'm just a little old health teacher." And, but I, I, you know, I think things need to be, there are certain things that need to be done in, in, at home, in, in privacy, and, and not put out. So, there you go.
It would be up to the board, it can definitely be changed. Um, what the committee looked at, the Family Life Advisory Committee, it was originally put into seventh grade, and it was discussed to put this into eighth grade and teach it as that any type of, um, sexual relations has sexual risks. So it wasn't going to be explicitly taught, it was that any type of, of, um, you know, possibility of outcomes of, of sexual relations does include risks.
And, Mr. Kyler, can, can I kind of?
Yes, please.
Of what the committee was, I, just to give a little bit of background about when, when the middle school subcommittee met to talk about the, the opt-out version, it was before we had made the decision at the high school level to say, okay, we're, we're going to create an opt-out version, right? Like, this is the local opt-out version. We were thinking that it might potentially be the family life curriculum that was going to be offered system-wide. And at that point, staff was, um, providing very strong arguments of, you need this type of information to be taught at the middle school level before kids get to high school, um, for the, the disadvantaged kids, the, the kids who don't necessarily have parent involvement, to have those discussions with their kids. And so that's why the, I think the committee had said, okay, well, we'll, we don't, we really don't think it's appropriate for seventh grade, but maybe we could, um, get comfortable with it being in eighth grade. But there was still a lot of hesitancy, um, from the committee to have it in middle school at all. And I think the committee in total agreed with exactly what you were saying earlier. So I think, but since we, since that work was done by the committee, we've since made the, the decision at the board level that, okay, we're going to have the, the state framework as laid out, and then we're creating the opt-out version, right? So, parents who want their kids to have that, um, to have that lesson, or that, um, parents that aren't involved will end up defaulting to that. So those kids would have the lesson in the middle school. So I think that the committee, like, as part of the opt-out option, I think the committee would be very comfortable with striking that entirely from eighth grade as well. Just to, just to give you a little bit of background about how that evolved.
And I do appreciate what they have done, because this was a, a large task. And I, um, and I, I just wanted to make sure that they understood that I do appreciate all their work. And, uh, but I still stick to my guns on my, my comments.
Would this have to go back to the committee since it was voted unanimously to keep it in? Or would it be, uh, board able to approve it?
Right, whatever the board approves tonight would, would be a go.
Right. So if, if that's the case, then, you, because I agree, we, we have the, these are the recommendations to the board, and we can approve them or revise them, right, as, as we see fit. So, um, if that's the case, Ms. Herbert, would you like to, to make a motion to amend?
Well, you can.
Oh, oh, sorry, there's more comments.
We've got two other people want to talk, so, um, Ms. Patagia, you were next.
Yeah, when I was looking through this, and I was sitting there, and I was looking more and more, and it was like, identify solo, vaginal, anal, and oral sex. And I, and I kept thinking, I'm like, okay, first of all, how, how do you even have those discussions without potentially demonstrating? I mean, I, I mean, to me, it's a legit, it's a question. I mean, how, how can you even have a discussion regarding solo sex without demonstrating that? Or anal sex, or oral sex? I mean, I, I'm sorry, but for middle school, first, first of all, you can't purchase any type of those items unless you're 18 or older. So even having any of those discussions, I think, is completely inappropriate for a middle school model. Now, yes, we know they, they probably look things up on social media, which that is in here too, is how to not do that, right? But that's, I, I'm, I really am, as a mom, I, I literally sit there and go, how, how can you have those conversations without even, you would have to demonstrate in some way. You would have to show something in some way, you know? And I'm worried about our teachers, too, that are completely uncomfortable with this dialogue. In, in any magnitude, whether it's the, the one you have to take or the opt-out one. I am really, really worried about those teachers. Um, Mr. Emili, is there, like, is there something that, if a teacher says, "I don't want to teach this," I, I don't want a teacher to get in trouble, and I don't want a parent to sue them or anything in that magnitude. And I honestly, I, I don't want to put a teacher in a bad spot.
Well, teachers are required to teach the prescribed curriculum as assigned. And teachers do not get an opt-out. Students get an opt-out. Teachers do not get an opt-out. Teachers may be reassigned. If a teacher were to say to the principal or to the supervisor, "I'm not comfortable with teaching this content," there may be a possibility.
Okay.
Not a sure thing, but there may be a possibility that the teacher is reassigned as the needs of the schools require. And that's never a guarantee. Ultimately, that's within the superintendent's discretion. Now, whatever the content of the curriculum is, the teacher must. Now, whatever the content of the curriculum is, the teacher must teach the prescribed curriculum, whether it's the framework, the alternative for the opt-out, but whatever it is, the teacher must teach what is prescribed. Teachers do not have discretion to alter the curriculum. Now, and I would add, to add visual aids that are not part of the curriculum would certainly be a prohibited thing. And I haven't seen anything on visual aids, and I hope that's not part of this, because I don't know where you would get that source material in the first place.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, because it says, you know, you have to identify those things. So how can you even begin to have that discussion without having any type of demonstration? Because you were like, "Well, this is anal sex." Okay, well, what exactly is anal sex? Well, this is solo sex. What exactly is solo sex? I mean, those, those things, like, you literally can't just talk about. You have to show it in some magnitude for that.
I hope not.
I don't want, no, and that's what I'm saying, like, how do you even begun, begin to do that?
I would just add that any resources that we would purchase as a school system to teach any curricular goals or indicators would go through our process. And not only go through our regular curricular process, but because it's family life indicators, it would also go to the Family Life Advisory Committee as well. So not only do the indicators go through that committee, but the resources that we have to purchase to teach those standards also get approved by that committee.
Yeah, this, I mean, this is just, I'm sorry, I think it's just totally inappropriate, this age group. I mean, even those are getting in high school, it's still sensitive. Yeah, I'd much rather we just get rid of that section altogether and move it to high school, like, make it health too, I don't know, but I think literally, that's just too sensitive of a topic for that young.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think that the committee would disagree with you, especially given that, you know...
What's happened since.
Right, right, how this has evolved since, so...
And there's many groups coming out now that are against this type of, and it's ones I think people would be really surprised with, that are coming out against this type of education, educating in our students, so...
Ms. Tedeschi.
On a little bit of a different note, so I don't mean to kind of curve the conversation, I guess I have a concern or a question about the removal of harassment, teasing, and bullying. Even if this isn't an explicit lesson, I think it's always beneficial to reiterate those points of respect and kindness that we were trying to reiterate. I would just like to see those put back in, even if it's a part of a lesson, a short, it doesn't have to be explicit examples of what something could be said, but just reiterating to students, I mean, middle school is known for spreading rumors, high school is known for spreading rumors, it is never, it never hurts the student body to reiterate the fact of respecting, excuse me, respecting kindness. So I'd just like to see this put back in, if that's possible. That's in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade.
And Ms. Tedeschi, I think from the, from the committee's standpoint, I think we completely agree, like, we don't want there to be harassment or bullying from any perspective. We just simply didn't want to specify all of these different things. But I think maybe if we, if you just say, "Describe ways to show courtesy and respect for others when aspects of their sexuality are different from one's own," period, like, don't, if that...
Because also, you don't want... If you start to introduce the idea of, there's two different groups, there's people choosing two different things, then you start to introduce the idea of, "Oh, they're wrong." So I agree with the point of, maybe we don't iterate exactly what people could be making fun of others for, and just say, "It is wrong, whatever they choose, they do, and whatever you choose, you do."
And that's exactly what the committee was trying to achieve, was that it was like, "Okay, we don't want to say, 'Okay, here's this group, now let's identify all these different things and say, 'Well, you shouldn't, you shouldn't harass or bully people for any of those things.'" We want to say, "No, you shouldn't harass and bully," period. Right? Like, because actually, by identifying all those things, you kind of introduce and increase the opportunity for bullying, but we'd rather just say, "Look, respect and no bullying," period.
Okay, so are we back to Dr. Dorsey, do you want...
Well, again, that was the one item that I was going to bring up as well. I mean, we're certainly crossing out, you know, a whole group of people here, and then when we get down to the harassment, teasing, teasing and bullying, how can we really say, "Don't tease, don't bully," based on these things if we're not really identifying them? I hear what you're saying, you know, we certainly need to show respect for everyone. And I guess part of showing the respect is, it's not that we are saying you have an understanding, but at least you're, you know, you're acknowledging, you know, that there certainly are differences. And I think it was, or shared earlier, you know, that, yeah, you know, some people might not be like you are, but, you know, you certainly still need to respect them and not bully. And again, we want to make sure that when we're saying this, that we are saying that we don't want to bully anyone based on, yeah, based on anything. And if we start saying including, but not limited to, you know, kids, I think, could understand that as well.
Ms. Savigny, a good question. You were on the committee, this is the opt-out.
This is the opt-out.
The state one that, that they possibly would opt out of, it still has all this in it, correct?
Yes.
So, so they do have that option.
Right. And again, I think that's, that's the default, the regular one provided by the state. And I must say that I know with our MAE directors, you know, we've certainly had a conversation with state board members, and again, the thought was that they probably didn't roll out the curriculum in a way that was, that they were really acknowledging, you know, "Yes, these are our guidelines, let's just make it work in your particular areas." I do, in addition to them saying that, you know, they also shared that they really did have, like, some national-level experts in the area of health being involved with coming up with what they have deemed, you know, is appropriate. So I think with, with what we're looking at, you know, we're sort of getting the best of both worlds in one sense, because again, we're still acknowledging that it's going to be parent choice, you know, what the students are going to be receiving. And I guess the only other thing I have is that, you know, for students who aren't receiving the state curriculum, where are they going to be getting some of this information? You know, as you, as you said earlier, some parents are going to be certainly sharing it with their students, and for those who aren't getting it from their parents, you know, they're going to be getting it from somewhere. And I guess that's what, what we need to question as well, because by getting it from somewhere, you know, how accurate is it going to be? And again, certainly a lot of information that's here that, you know, who would have ever thought that we would, you know, be in conversations like this? But again, it's where we are today, and, you know, again, parents do have a lot to say, you know, as far as how they want their students to move forward. We're questioning how teachers are going to be teaching some of the items in the curriculum, but I'm guaran, I guarantee you that, you know, through their supervisors and through the curriculum, you know, it's going to be a way, because it's going to be a way that they can actually teach it. I mean, I go back years and years ago with family life development at the elementary level. Well, when we started talking about good touch, bad touch, you know, that was, again, something very sensitive, and, you know, parents had to give their approval for the kids to even be involved in that. And again, we know for their safety, it certainly was good to have them involved in that. Some parents wanted it, and some parents didn't. So again, we have two different paths, and it certainly will be up to the parents to choose what they feel is best for their students.
Okay, do we want to, do you guys want to talk on this more? Do we want Mrs. Herbert to do her motion, or...
Were there any other items that, that folks were concerned with? Or was it just those two?
Looked to me like we, we have, we have Mrs. Herbert's, and we have what Dr. Dorsey just said, so...
Right.
You have more?
No, I think...
Okay.
I was just wondering if we continue to move forward with adding back in the harassment, teasing, and bullying, with the exception of what's in the parentheses? Could we also extend, excuse me, extend that into peer pressure, whether that is through social media or in general? I think especially for seventh and eighth grades, that would be beneficial to talk about the peer pressure, and whether that might not necessarily be identified as bullying or harassment, it is a degree of that, and does cause some tensions between students.
I have to agree with her, because I know there is, sometimes there can be, particularly with Snapchat, and this is another discussion we're going to be having regarding bring your own device and stuff, but there is peer pressure to like, "Hey, show me something."
Right, and there, there is definitely, totally agree with your point about peer pressure, and just making sure that it's from a, from a sexuality standpoint. Okay. Because otherwise, that, that would definitely be covered in, in other units. But from a family life perspective, I think we tried to address that as part of the sexually explicit media.
Okay. Yeah, the body image and everything, okay, go ahead.
Right, so, you know, identify the impact sexually explicit media can have on one's body image, expectations about sex relationships and self-esteem, really, and, and there's, you know, negative and legal consequences of how, what the repercussions can be for some of those things. But maybe it makes sense to make a specific statement about peer pressure, if you feel strongly about it.
I think that would kind of go in, into the anatomy part, or the sexually explicit media. I think that the peer pressure definitely is part of that. But maybe, maybe you should do a peer pressure one specific, because, again, there could be the peer pressure, "Well, if you really love me, you'll do this."
Yeah, and that's where it'll...
Yeah.
That's where it'll start to overlap with the safety, but it's better to reiterate something twice than not say it at all.
Yes. I think that's something, that's really, that's a good point. Yeah, because we do, there, there is that PSA right now, you know, regarding domestic violence, and it kind of goes along the same way. It's the whole, "If you love me, you'll do this for me."
So, does, does it make sense to say something like, "Explain the negative consequences and legal consequences of succumbing to peer pressure and sending sexually explicit pictures," you know, something, something...
Maybe health relationships and consent.
Yeah, I think you could extend more so on the peer pressure of, like, social media into that sexually explicit media, but also extend peer pressure on, you know, peer friend groups of, "Oh, you should participate in said activity," or, "Oh, you should not participate in said activity," less of a, let's say, a relationship between two people, more so a group peer pressure towards one person. So you could kind of separate them, but there will definitely be overlap.
Okay. How about this? If we change it to, so the category is harassment, teasing, and bullying. If we changed it to harassment, teasing, bullying, and peer pressure...
Perfect.
And then simply say, "Describe ways to show courtesy and respect for others," period.
Or you could even leave in the when aspects, and then all the way down to the period, just leaving out those parentheses.
Just take out the parenthetical.
Yeah.
So do you want to make a specific motion, and then we'll go back to Mrs. Herbert's?
Okay. So, how about we make a motion for two, the two items combined, so we would change, make a motion to change the topic of harassment, teasing, and bullying to harassment, teasing, bullying, and peer pressure, and adding back in everything except the parenthetical for that item.
Yeah, explain why it's wrong to tease, bully, or succumb, or succumb to peer pressure based on...
Just a suggestion, I think we can, I think we're, we're capturing what it is that you're looking for. We could definitely change the language in the draft opt-outs as they are, or we can make a note of it as curriculum is being developed to make sure that we're hitting those, those key topics as we go. It's completely up to, up to you as to what is, you know, what you feel would be best. We can, obviously, we can revise the language as it stands, or just make a note to make sure as we're drafting curriculum and resources that we're covering those topics in the, in the curriculum that we develop.
Okay, so just make a note that we'll add peer pressure to the topic.
Again, it's totally up to you, I mean, we can definitely revise that if you want, but, but knowing that peer pressure is a theme that you, you know, you feel important and is addressed, we can just make sure that the writers have that, and you're going to see that, as Ms. McCabe said, when it comes back for your review.
I think it's for all of it, right? It'd be sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
It would be for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
And what we can do is actually share that at our, the next Family Life Advisory Committee, those changes, and then tweak it as well.
Right.
Knowing that this is what was approved by the, by the board.
Right. And just take out, just take out all the parentheticals, and then, right, okay. And then the, the other change would be to eliminate, so on page five, under sexual health, it's the...
I want to make a motion on that one.
Oh, you want to make that? Okay, I was just making it together, okay.
I want to make a motion not to insert 1C7 dot 13, to not insert that.
Are you, you're comfortable with yours changed without a motion? Is that what you're saying, Donna, or are you still...
Well, I think that, I think we should probably just make the motion and go, go through the process for each one of them. I was just going to do it together, but...
No, I think we need to have separate, because they're totally different, to make sure. So go ahead, do yours first.
Okay, so that's the motion I'll make for the first one, then, is that we just add the words "peer pressure" to the topic for all three grade levels, and, and remove the parentheticals.
Mm-hmm.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of a motion to amend it?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mrs. Herbert?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion not to insert 1C7 dot 13.
So, I'll second.
The second box on page five. And we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now, if there's no more discussion, are we ready to vote on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that was, so we are now down to N. I need a motion for the approval of right of entry and an indemnification agreement for, with Carroll County Youth Services Bureau.
I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
This right of entry will allow the Carroll County Youth Services Bureau to access a portion of our property at Robert Moten to conduct a feasibility study for a potential expansion of their facility. They have been proactive in consulting with us as they move forward.
So, this is just access for planning?
Correct.
To conduct their study. And let me say how grateful I am that I have different topics than Mr. Wernick. Yeah, there's, it's not to move forward, other than to conduct what we would call a feasibility study.
Comments or questions, board members? You guys, can you ask him about five or six things? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I need a motion for the approval of Maryland Wrestling Officials Association contract. I think Mrs. Herbert should make that motion.
I'll, I'll second.
Mrs. McCabe?
This is the contract to provide officials for varsity and JV home wrestling meets for the winter season.
Good evening, board members.
And can you tell Mrs. Herbert they don't blow the whistle as much as they do in field hockey, right?
That is a true statement, sir.
Yeah, I know, two points. I used to keep score at the wrestling matches for Mr. Barline. Now, is this like normal 30, or has it gone up, or, I know it keeps on going up.
Prices have increased, but we, we just completed a three-year contract with them, and this is the start of a new three-year contract.
I wonder about over here.
So, it's a slight increase, but it's not an extravagant increase. We've been really working to bring all of our officials' associations into longer-term deals, so that we can better control our costs and budget properly.
Do you have trouble getting wrestling officials?
I'm having trouble getting all officials.
Really?
Yes, there's, there's a shortage. Yes, there's, there's a shortage across the country. Shockingly, a lot of people don't enjoy taking the opportunity to get yelled at from the stands and by coaches and by fans, by coaches, sometimes by athletes. It, it's a surprise. But while I'm here, I will, I will at least make a plug that this week we are currently, the MPSAA is celebrating Officials Appreciation Week, so we are recognizing all of our officials across Carroll County at all of our contests. We are, um, reading our prepared announcement, introducing them by name, and we are also providing them with a CCPS athletics logoed water bottle, thanking them for their time.
Very nice. I know, I'm hearing.
And like you alluded to, MWA has had a good bit of turnover and has trouble getting officials. So what they've done, I think, they're, they're focusing on high school and college a little more, and some of the rec groups that they used to do, which was good training for their new guys, they've had to eliminate because they just don't have enough people. It, it's a shame. It's tight in every sport.
Correct. And, and I do believe one of the things they're talking about doing is trying to get Mr. Kyler out on the mat officiating.
Hi. I know, I can tell you as a wrestling mom, I'm excited for the year. I got the email the other day, they're getting ready to have winter tryouts, so cross our fingers. I'm excited. My name, Mr. Dotson's excited too.
Yeah, I will say, um, I, I can totally understand and sympathize with not wanting to get yelled at by fans in the stands and everything. So, because my, my son refs for rec soccer. And there, there are some parents and some fans out there who can just be cruel. I mean, you know, he's a fourteen-year-old trying to do his best, you know, and doing a pretty nice job. Parents, be nice. Be nice.
Well, I'm certain that in, in your current positions, you all never get any criticism, so you may not have the ability to relate to them.
Exactly.
And Dr. Dorsey, whose husband was a wrestler, did you, are you ready to comment?
And gets a moment of fame, thank you.
And he beat some other county wrestlers.
A champ does that.
Yep, yep, he did.
Yeah, but again, it, it is quite unfortunate that officials have to take a lot of offensive kinds of things. Because again, they're, they're kids, they're enjoying their sport hopefully, and I'm sure the refs are doing the best they can and should be supported and appreciated for that. So it's nice to hear what you're doing to acknowledge them during this, is it a special month you said?
It's Officials Appreciation Week. We'll do one for each season. Last year, we gave them commemorative coins, thanking them. This year, we decided to do water bottles, just trying to do something different in addition to announcing and, you know, thanking them and take, and posting it to social media. We're trying to give a small memento to thank them for what they do on behalf of Carroll County Public Schools Athletics and our students.
So I guess with what they're doing, the earplugs wouldn't be a good gift, huh?
I think you might have, I think you may have given me a good idea for next year.
Any other discussion or comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now, discussion items. The first discussion item is bring your own device. Mrs. McCabe?
The board had asked for a discussion around our current BYOD policy, especially now that we're through the pandemic and that we have one-to-one laptops for our students. So Mr. Shockney and the school directors have a brief presentation, and then we'll be able to entertain any discussion.
All right, good evening, board.
They seem, they seem like a fun group.
They're excited.
They're excited to be here. And yes, I have Dr. Farver, Ms. Gromada, Mr. King here to help me through this, just a couple of quick slides, and then we'll open up for, for discussion. But we just want to provide an overview of board policy, JICJ, also known as portable electronic devices, also known as bring your own device as well, and the associated regulations. This policy, JICJ, was last reviewed on July twelfth of, of twenty nineteen, so it's due for its, for its three-year review, so it's a great time to, to do a little review and, and discussion. Policy and references, obviously, bring your own device and portable electronic devices appear in four distinct areas. So I just wanted to point this out to make sure that we're communicating very clearly with families and our schools do a great job of communicating expectations to both families and student, students. Obviously, it's in policy and regulation, but it's also reflected in our Student Services Manual and our informational calendar, which is also our student parent handbook that we reference frequently as well. So just a little bit on history. The, the plan was, or the policy was initially developed in two thousand and two with several revisions, most recent being two thousand and nineteen. When this policy was written, it was written to include all portable electronic devices, including laptops, tablets, cell phones, et cetera. It was written prior to our implementation of a one-to-one student device program, and then the timelines I put up there that's phased in. I'm proud to say that all of our students have, in our schools have a, have a device to support them in their instruction and learning. Just a little bit about the, the, the policy statement summary, and I highlighted a couple of key points as we go. Obviously, we, we're here for instruction, and the key, obviously, in having this policy is what is in, in yellow up there, is that we want to minimize distraction and maximize learning time. That is first and foremost, obviously, what we're here to do, and, and that's what we're trying to communicate through the, through the policy and then the regulations as well. We recognize instructional technology devices are powerful tools that teachers can incorporate into their lessons. We should be providing access, as we are doing, to instructional technology devices on a much greater scale currently than when this policy was, was initially developed and then, and then revised. Personally-owned portable electronic devices, specifically cell phones, may be brought to school. We're going to get into a little bit more on that. But in general, cell phones should be silenced and stored during the school day in accordance with the administrative regulations, and those are a little bit different at each level. And we'll talk about that at, at each level of our schools here. Some things about responsibilities, and the first is with families. A personally-owned device is a family's decision, period. We don't want to, we don't want to, we're not trying to encourage families to, to, to make the, the decision on. Families make that decision, period, and we respect what families decide. Students are never required to bring a, a device to school. Kids may bring their device as long as they abide by all regulations. Student misuse shall and does result in disciplinary action. Our administrators, our teachers, our schools, when a problem arises, they address it. They address it very clearly. They clearly communicate the expectation to the student, and we move on. And we, and we continue to address if, if, if problems continue to arise. We always ask parents, if there's ever a need to make an emergency contact with their child during the school day, to please contact the school's main office.
I hate to interrupt you, but I will tell you, that's one of the biggest problems in high school. Mom will say, hey, I'm coming to pick you up. We got to go somewhere.
Yep, we need help from our families on this, for sure.
And, and that is, that is one of the, the biggest problems. And also, students texting mom and say, look, I don't feel good, I want to come home. And the parents are there at the health room before they even get there, and, you know, that really messes up the, the school day. But I will say that is, those two things are abused a whole lot, and I'll be quiet.
We, we totally agree. All right, so we're going to break this down. I'm going to have each school-level director just talk a little bit about what things look like at, at each level. Dr. Farver?
Good evening. So at the elementary level, it's highly recommended that elementary students do not bring their devices to school or on the bus. The devices must be silenced if they do come in, and then they're stored out of sight. And they, as soon as they walk into the building, and then they are allowed to take them out after dismissal. No portable devices shall be used to record, store, transmit any type of image, sound, video, except for if it's a, a project or something that is approved by the school staff. When approved for use, devices should be silenced or direct, directed and directed through the headphones. Disciplinary action, if the board policy or regulations or guidelines, discipline action will be taken at that time.
Do we have many teachers who actually use the students' private devices?
There are some instances where if a student comes in that they do need their cell phone, sometimes cell phones can control hearing aids for students. So in that case of, if they're going to change their microphone, a student may need it for that. Insulin pumps, sometimes cell phones will control an insulin pump. So at that point, a student may use, use it as well. So there's various medical conditions. With our laptops that we have now, it's rare that they would have to use it for an instructional.
Okay, and do we see a lot of discipline at the elementary level for misuse of phones?
There is some, when it, when it is taken out. Not a whole lot, but there is some, yes.
And do, do they ever come up missing? I mean, do, do they get taken or lost or something during the school day?
So they're elementary school kids, so sometimes they do get lost or misplaced. But generally, for a rule of thumb, if the student puts it in their backpack and puts it in their locker, then it's usually safe there. But if they're taking it out and either keeping it in a pocket or doing something that's a violation against the policy, that's generally when we find something happens.
So I have to let you know that I had, uh, when we were getting ready for this, and I said, all right, I know this is one of the, one of the biggest challenges we've had since we've gone back. We have the one-on-one devices now. And I talked to a couple of teachers. It's the same thing over and over. Please, God, get rid of them. Get them out, get them out of schools, get them off the bus. They're a distraction. They're doing whatever they want during the day with it. Get it out. And, I, I mean, I think that's another thing I'm hearing too, is teachers are afraid to take the student's cellphone because then the parent, how dare you, you took my kid's phone, you know? So I think, I mean, I, I completely understand it, you know, if they have medical reasons. I mean, the, it's been incredible what those devices can do now. But YouTube-ing and on the bus with them, in the hallway with them, elementary school, no.
The other thing we see a lot of is a lot of parents leave before their students do, especially in third, fourth and fifth grade. So their students are, they require their students to text them when they get on the bus, and then text them when they get home or if there's something late. So that's one thing that we have found has been useful for peace of mind for parents when they don't have daycare.
Okay.
We're going to work through a couple of slides. There's a chart at the end that kind of breaks down by level, and then, and, you know, any feedback on any, you know, change or direction the board wants to go, we'll definitely, you know, we'll definitely take that, you know, and move forward with it. Middle schools, Ms. Gromada?
Good evening. So middle school, there's a little bit more leeway where the school administration has some more ability because the students are allowed to carry them throughout the school day. I will say, last year, I agree with you, it's a bit of a mess in middle schools with, with cell phones. Our principals really went in this year being very clear with parents, with communication. And basically, at every school right now, it is when you come into the building, cell phones are away. They don't come out until you leave. There are a couple of schools who, in eighth grade, they allow, like on Fridays, like just at lunchtime, things like that. Because we do recognize there's more opportunity at high school to use your phone. So we want to also help teach, you know, responsibility as well, just not during instructional times, obviously. So we've had a really good start to the year. Again, we, we are allowed to allow students to use them during lunch, but we are not doing that except for those special situations. Thanks. And then, again, you, you asked earlier about needing to use them in the classroom for instructional purposes. We really don't need to at all anymore. Our biggest battle, I think, with the cell phones is students asking to use the restroom. And we know last year, especially with the TikTok challenges and everything, the restrooms were a bit of a challenge as well. So just to kind of piggyback, because it, they kind of go hand in hand. A lot of our schools kind of changed bathroom procedures to make sure we, there was no way there could be ten kids in the bathroom at one time or things like that. And so along with that, that's where we're seeing the cellphone use, is really that monitoring. And we just don't have the staff in middle schools to help monitor bathrooms. We don't have the security assistance and things that, you know, the high schools have. So that's really been our challenge. But as far as like, in the instructional time, in the hallways, in the cafeterias, things are going really well. And I will say, our parents have been super supportive. They have been great, just kind of following along and supporting the schools if they did have to confiscate the phone. So it's going much better. We are all very excited.
I, I was happy to see at Sykesville, East Middle, when we did the tours, you know, it's North Carroll Middle.
Yep.
Signs up, cell phones put away, and I'm like, yes.
Absolutely.
Yes, put them away. And I, and I'm very happy to see that in our middle schools. Like, the message is clear, you know, get them away, don't need them out while you're here. And I think, I appreciate that as a mom.
At Northwest, they're even trying to do, encouraging the teachers, and they're, they're following along to, to model the behavior. So, you know, so you're, as an adult, even your cellphone is away in the classroom. Or if, you know, like, some of them have like little jails in their, in their classroom, and so if your phone goes off, you have it out, you know, like that's your warning, and they put it in the jail, and then the teacher will even put theirs in, in there as well. So just little thing, you know, just, just trying to model and kind of change that, that culture a little bit.
You had said about teacher, don't we already have a cellphone policy for teachers?
We do.
Okay, all right, well, it's good to know too.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thank you.
King?
Thank you, Mr. Shockney. So I won't be redundant. Obviously, as the students get older and more mature, we try to give them some more responsibility. We are the same as far as the classroom environment. We don't want to see the phones out. The phones have very little instructional use. The areas I am aware, a lot of the ACT teachers will go outside. They may do some nature hikes, take pictures of animals, et cetera, but it's pretty limited. And I've now visited all the high schools but one, and I have not seen classroom phones. I, I feel like we all made it a big point of contention, and I read the referrals every day. And there's a few here and there, and it's usually a lunch detention. They get a slip and a warning at some of the schools. I've not had a single parent conversation about a cellphone issue, which I'm, I'm happy about. Certainly, you know, our big change is that we do allow them to use them during lunch and, in the hallways. And honestly, as a parent of a freshman, there is a, you know, there's a need sometimes. You know, are you practicing today? Are you going home on the bus? Like, there's a lot of communication. We have a lot of students that are leaving for their internships to drive to Career and Tech, to go to work at the, end of their day. And so their ability to communicate is important. And, and honestly, I feel like what we've seen, the kids that are misusing them are going to be mean anyway. I, I mean, not to oversimplify things, but if they're going to be saying mean things on social media through a text, they probably are doing it in person as well or in some way. So we deal with the behavior, and to me, the phone is the, the tool that they use, but they're usually involved in other types of poor behavior, so.
One thing I have noticed, particularly on a high school level, is a lot of the, the groups, like the different, you know, the teams or clubs, they've been using, whether it be Snapchat, they have a group, or any of the other social media apps. Is there a way to find some type of app that would be appropriate or, or better to have those groups use to get away? Because I'll, I'll be honest, as a mom, there, there are certain, I'm like, I don't want you having it. I, I do not want you having that app, no. I don't have it because I don't want to deal with it, and now I got to have it just to monitor your butt, and it's a pain in the butt. So I don't, I want to see like, another app implemented for them to use. I think it'd be much better.
Mr. Duffy did some good work, and I know he's departed with the GroupMe app. And that is what he told the, the coaches that they had to use.
Okay.
So it is very transparent, the student, athletes, the parents and the coaches in there. Now, do teams, students and kids on their own form their, yes. But that is not any official communication from Carroll County. So if a student tomorrow, apparently we're going to have a lot of rain, is, is a football player, and they're not quite sure, maybe they're at the, at Career and Tech, if they're practicing, they should know via that app.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Duffy's received really good feedback from his coaches, and certainly as a parent, I've, I've really appreciated, appreciated it.
Is there a way we can kind of, as a school system, kind of promote that app service for the different clubs? Because I think that'd be better, and even as parents, we can feel a little more comfortable, like, okay, I don't have Snap, but I can go ahead and try to get this, just to kind of monitor and see what's going on schedule, when the games are, is practice canceled? I think those things are.
Sure, and I can have, and maybe Mr. Duffy and I can connect with, with Mr. Stewart as well, because I know band and drama, obviously, are huge groups that, that need to communicate about what they're doing after school. And then, you know, Mr. Melhorn's great with the SGA, and obviously, we're presented in these, in these meetings with CCSGA. So I, I am completely in favor of that, because I think it's been a healthy change for us so that the kids can communicate.
I think that's good. All right, okay, thank you.
I, I do have a comment with high schools, and it always made it to me that you're all just ready, be career and college ready and all that. And at lunchtime, they all sit at the table and text each other, where we need to be talking and interacting. Because when they grow up, unless they're going to be behind a screen all day, that's a failure on our part. And it, it always amazed me that there they are texting each other, and you're right beside each other, and it's like, well, you have to be able to speak to other people.
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
It's all, every day.
Really quickly to Mrs. Pataglia, I would say, I think a hundred percent of my clubs are on GroupMe. We don't use anything else, and if anything else, it's we're additionally posting on SchoolG or we're additionally emailing, but everything is on GroupMe.
That's great. Thank you.
When do, for the sports teams, when do they hear about practice or a change or whatever? Do they need access during the day? It almost sounds like elementary, middle, after school and before school, and put it away between. High school's a little more cloudy, and we just heard why maybe you shouldn't have it at lunch. But do they need it to find out if something's changing after school?
In most instances, our coaches are also, you know, working in the school. In some instances, there may not be, but there's also through the athletic directors, you know, they will communicate as well during the day if there's a change to practice or practice has been canceled or games have been rescheduled, something along those lines.
Yeah, they would do evening announcements at North Carroll, and they'd say, field hockey is going to four seasons tonight, you know, change or have a different pair of shoes. Soccer is going to practice here. And they would do evening announcements about one or two minutes before, and then they would need to use their phones. Or the coach or the athletic director would send notes out, and they have aids. And so I don't think they still need their phones for that.
And I was with a group of high school kids and mentioned some bullying in school and kind of implied it was probably rare. Two or three, Mr. Kenny, you want to see it? They showed me. You want to see it? They showed me. And I saw more about activities that happen in the hallways than I'd seen in months. And I don't know if that's appropriate, you know, but obviously, if they have them in their pocket, it's going to happen. Ms. Pataglia?
I know, you know, we do talk about being career and college-ready and real-world-ready. Because, I mean, that's another thing. When you go to a business, there's nothing more annoying. We are checking out, and there's the cashier texting while she's scanning. And I'm sorry, but, I mean, I know they can get in trouble for that at different places. They have different cellphone policies, whether a manager's there or not. But, you know, you need to prepare all these kids for the real world. And, you know, your job, you're not going to be able to have it on you all day long. You got, you know, break time is probably about it. But, you know, we definitely need to make sure we are at least preparing them a little bit more. And elementary, I will say, that's the one I struggle the most with. You know, and I know, you know, I hear the parents' concerns, like, I want to be able to get a hold of my kid. Call the school, I'm sorry, but, you know. Yeah, I mean, call the school, leave a note for the school, they'll make sure your student gets it. I don't, I definitely don't think elementary is appropriate at all, especially now that we have the one-on-one devices.
I mean, as a board, you can certainly, you know, change it and not have any cellphone use at elementary school. What we had even before we had a BYOD policy is we found that parents would buy their kindergarten or whatever grade level they were in a cellphone and put it in the backpack, and we didn't even know it was there, but they did it out of fear that if something happened, and it could be anything, they wanted their child to be able to have a way to communicate with the parents. And it didn't matter what we said, as far as, you know, well, we would contact you. I think they're thinking about a catastrophic kind of situation. And so we found ourselves at the elementary level dealing with a situation where we knew that even if we did not allow them or if the board didn't allow them, we would still have them in the elementary school. And the only way we would know is if we searched every child's backpack. But it's different at the elementary because they're not allowed to have them out anyway during the school day. So we really don't see them. And so, I mean, if we do change it, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about how to implement that and then, and then whether or not we want to try to ensure that it's being followed and what that might look like.
I mean, even if, to your point, you know, parent wants to make sure their kid's okay, unlike you had said about, you know, texting when they get off the bus. Okay, fine and dandy, but you're not taking it out of your bookbag at all on school property, not lunchtime, no bathroom, not in the classroom, anything. Not even on the bus. And I think bus drivers need to be able to give referrals, too, if they have their cellphones out on the bus. That's one thing I've been hearing from bus drivers, too. That's a problem.
Apparently, they're allowed to have them out on the bus unless the driver has said otherwise. It's almost at the point now, I guess, where everyone has just relied so heavily on them that I can hear the parent concern with wanting to know, gee, is my latchkey child in the home or walking to the home safely now? Is he in the home? Has he left the home? So I can see, you know, parents really wanting that kind of communication. But I do agree, during the school day, they really don't need to have those out at the elementary level.
And again, I think you made a good point about even getting off the bus. In my family, to my knowledge, elementary kids don't have cellphones. It's just not allowed. But if they did, I feel like, not during the school day, but they ought to be able to get off their bus and text mom and dad and say they're home. You know, they, and I agree with what you said. Unless we start strip searching and searching lockers, I don't know. We need to have a realistic rule, not a rule we can't enforce.
And the school bus is a challenge. Obviously, you know, we've heard of problems that happen on the school bus. But for also for other many students, it's used appropriately and positively on the bus and has, you know, may have, you know, resulted in, you know, less disruptions or noise or those kinds of things as well. So, you know, obviously, yes, we, when a problem comes up, whether it's on the bus, whether it's during the day, and with our older students, you know, we deal a lot with social media problems that didn't happen during the day at school. They happen in the evening, but obviously is having an impact on us during the day. But in each of those instances, we address. And, you know, no doubt about it, there have been some unfortunate situations where there may have been an incident at a school, and a student has been quick to, you know, to bring out the phone and record or videotape. But that is clearly in violation of our procedures and of our regulations, excuse me. And we address that with those students. So that's the difficult thing. These are, cellphones especially, there's, I think it's, I'm very confident in saying, with the one-to-one device policy, instructionally, with some very few exceptions here and there. You know, that's what the device is for, and it's working. That's what the laptops are for, and they're working. But again, these are, these are very much, you know, cellphones are very much part of our culture and our world. And, you know, obviously, it's a delicate balance of, you know, what we want to allow to happen in our schools, but, you know, while minimizing distraction and focusing ultimately on instruction. So it is a challenge. And any change, obviously, we could, we would definitely, you know, we could definitely implement. But, you know, this is just a summary of what's allowed and prohibited at each of the levels, which is just a summary or different way of displaying what we hit in the other, in the other slides.
So this would have been evaluated next year?
Around this time.
Next year?
This year.
This year.
This year. So the next step is to, now that this has been discussed, is to actually revise it or not revise it?
Right. So based on the feedback that you give us this evening, we'll bring it back next month for approval.
Okay. So has everybody given what they wanted to say? Ms. Herbert?
So the yellow on those slides is the changes.
No, no, that's just what's different at each level.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
Just really just this chart.
Emphasizing. Okay, got it.
This is as-is.
As-is.
This isn't any proposed changes. This is as-is. So what do we want to change on it? Dr. Dorsey?
Well, I was just going back to that school bus as an environment and just thinking where kids are today. I mean, nine times out of 10, when my grandkids hop in the car, the first thing they're doing is putting those headphones on and entertaining themselves with their devices. And I think, well, you know, you really need to be paying attention to the roads because one day, you're going to be sitting behind the wheel, and how will you know how to get? Well, we've got the GPS for that. So anyway.
They won't know. I attest to that to a daughter who just started driving.
Now, Dr. Dorsey, I said in my family, elementary kids don't have them. But when I have six grandkids and we get in the car, I hand them out because they get on them and I don't hear a word while I'm driving. So I guess I'm not preparing them for the future, but it makes my life peaceful.
That's right. I mean, that's their entertainment.
Our bus drivers probably feel the same way.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. They probably prefer they be playing on them.
The one thing I heard from parents was regarding the bus with elementary was you have kids who are viewing material that they typically do not permit their child to view at home. And I think that was one of the biggest things I heard from some parents, was like, you got kids that are watching stuff that I don't allow my kid to watch. One kid was watching It, and apparently, they're in second grade in a kindergarten, was watching it and had nightmares for two months. And that's what I heard, you know, last year. So I think.
I remember that email.
Yeah. So I think, you know, that's part of the issue. We talk about, we want to make sure that things are age-appropriate in our curriculum, but here we have something that's happening on school buses that we can't control.
Yeah, and I think in that case, the last time, it was, what, a student who sat beside another student who was really having an issue with what the student was seeing and what he was looking at as well.
Yeah.
Ms. Viggly?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that we need to revise the policy. I mean, based on the discussion that we had tonight, I'm glad that we talked about it and you kind of refreshed our memory for how it is implemented at each level in our schools. I think we, the last time we looked at it, we were in a very different world, right? Like, we didn't have one-to-one devices. We were trying to use them in an instructional capacity where we could, like, try to leverage it a little bit. We're now in a very different world, and I think discipline had also kind of gotten pretty out of control and from a structure perspective. So I'm really glad and thankful to you guys for kind of saying, at the beginning, very beginning of the school year, that this is the structure and this is how we're going to deal with cellphones. And I know my kids both came home the first day and said, wait, what? And I'm like, good. I think providing that structure again and really adhering to it has been fantastic. So I know that we have some concerns. There's always going to be some concerns on buses for elementary school kids. But it's, again, it's, I think maybe you manage by exception rather than trying to make a hard and fast rule that's going to be very difficult to monitor and do anything about. Because the bus drivers can't do anything about it, right? And so you're only going to know about it when someone raises the issue. And I think it's potentially going to be an issue regardless of whether we have a rule or not, right? Like, kids that are going to use them are going to use them, and you need the parents to raise the awareness. So I don't know if, you know, forbidding them on buses is really going to do anything. It's like you just have to kind of manage by, manage by exception.
I agree, and it's very similar, even without the phones and devices. We still have students who bring in, you know, age-inappropriate comic books to share on the bus or magazines or you name it. So it's not just a device issue.
So I guess I'm okay with not revising it. I'm really glad that we had the discussion, and I'm glad to see all the efforts that are going on. But I don't, I don't personally feel the need for revisions to it.
Do you, do all of you feel comfortable? Are we putting the administrators in a bad spot where we say yes unless you say no? Would we be better off to make it black and white and say, no, they can't have it in the hallways and stairways? Or are you guys in favor of letting it up to each school?
I think we're, I think we're comfortable with it as it stands, giving schools, obviously, at each tier, a little differentiation, but then the flexibility at the school level to be able to address the specifics.
And the parents have been great. Like, so because we're all in it together, it's been great. If there was, if we weren't all on the same page, I think that would make it more difficult. We would need additional support, but I think right now, we're heading in a really good direction.
So there is a high level of consistency across all the, across middle schools. Okay.
You comfortable?
And elementary.
And I'm glad if teachers, you know, teachers feel comfortable, too, going, all right, I've told you, I told you once. Give it to me now. And I want teachers to know, they can do that. They do have the power to do that.
Of course. Remember, it's always ultimately at the discretion of that teacher. If a teacher gives a directive to a student and that student does not comply, that's why we have the discipline process, and we can definitely engage, work progressively with the student and their family. That also then becomes a communication tool for families at home, and we work through the situation.
So is the consensus with the board that we leave it as-is, they would go out for public comment, and it would come back next meeting as an action item to say, we reviewed it for the third year and we approve it as-is? Or we could change it that night based on public comment? Is that, everybody comfortable? Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Now, the discussion item, proposed revisions to band uniform purchase. Mrs. McCabe?
So moved. Oh, no, I'm sorry. This is the.
Say again? Oh, this is the discussion, yes. As much as you four ladies want to tell me what to do next, it's Mrs. McCabe's turn.
We would like to propose some revisions to Board Policy DJ AB that make it more reflective of our current practice. It has been many years since the policy was enacted, and an update is long overdue. The major change sets a flat dollar amount to the board's contributions to make it more equitable for all schools. So we're basically just memorializing what's been happening for years. We've gone from a percentage contribution to a flat rate.
So when we would pay 50%, or what was the usual cost? What would you usually pay for the band uniforms?
It would vary depending. So what would happen, though, is depending on what the band form, what type of band uniform that they would select, some schools would cost more and others would cost less. And so there wasn't a consistency. So at one point, it was decided that the Board of Education would provide $14,500 across the board. That would cover, you know, plus band boosters, whatever, they would be able to raise. That would cover enough funds to support, to support the uniforms so that everyone had an equal playing field of the finances for band uniforms.
So, again, it sounds like, again, there were some extremes. But what does it typically cost, I don't know, to get a band uniform?
In preparation for, obviously, it all depends. Mr. Stewart had shared with me that the range in a uniform could be anywhere from $30,000 or up, depending upon the size of the band and then what the, what the uniform is itself. So that's the, the other piece that I gleaned from this, because I asked some of these same initial questions, too. I think this also helps some of the schools, maybe with a smaller participation in the band, be able to kind of bridge a gap with doing a flat rate versus, versus a percentage.
I know that, you know, as I said before, the for my day really killed some of these bands. What's the, do you know, like, Man Vows versus Westminster High School? Do you have numbers or anything? How many are in?
I can, well, I can only speak as a parent of a marching band student at Westminster High School, who I believe there are close to a little over 50 members in the marching band. And marching band's an extracurricular activity. And, but participation across other schools, I'd have to get that, have to do a little research.
Because they used to have 100 in their band, you know? That's what I'm saying. So, wow, they've really gotten a lot smaller then.
Correct. Yeah, I think, I think the pandemic definitely had an impact.
Well, I'm sure that did too, but.
But I think they're seeing students starting to return to.
Any other questions, comments? So this would be the same situation. This will come back next month for approval.
When it comes, when it comes back, can we get the, some more information, though, concerning what the band numbers are?
For, with participation are across our high schools? Okay. We could definitely do that, too. And again, obviously, if the board wants to go in a different direction, obviously, we can, we can definitely do that as well. But this is, this has been the practice of previous years. But we will definitely do a little research and get you the participation numbers.
So being, like, if a student signs up for actual band, that's different from marching band, correct? Okay. So that is something completely different.
Very different.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we knew that. All right, I do want to make sure we knew that, too. Okay.
Yeah, because it says on the cover page that the fiscal impact is zero, right? So, I was assuming, like, I had the same question you had, Pat, like, okay, is this basically going to end up being the same amount that we've been talking about in the past? So.
I'll get you two numbers, if that's okay. We'll get the average numbers of, you'll get the participation numbers, and then, as best as we can, maybe at a recent cost of per uniform, what we think that may be. Okay?
Great.
Okay, that ends our discussion items. Is there any unfinished business or new business? If not, at 5:00 PM on Wednesday, November 9th, there's a board meeting with citizen participation in this boardroom at 5:00 PM. And on Wednesday, November 30th, the Board of Education and the Carroll County delegation[1735.86]